Started. Tonight is the Board of Commissioners meeting for Monday, November 23rd, 2020. We're conducting this evening's meeting via Zoom, which is being streamed live on YouTube. You can make your comments by sending them to public@radnor.org. Hope I got that right? Can we get a thumbs up from somebody? Got that right? Got thumbs up from somebody? Perfect. Thank you. And we will read them into the record. Let's get started with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Moving to public participation. First, I have an... Pay your pardon? First, I have an email from Brian Q., who writes, "Dear Commissioners, on behalf of the trustees of the Radnor Educational Foundation, REF, I would like to express REF's support for the motion to repeal Article 1, Chapter 260, amusement tax of the Radnor Township Code appearing in the Radnor Township Board of Commissioners, November 23rd, 2020 meeting agenda. Similarly, and in case that motion is not adopted, REF wishes to express its opposition to proposed ordinance 2020-18, also scheduled to be considered by the Commissioners this evening. Radnor Township Board of Commissioners, November... Motion is not adopted." I'm gonna pause for a moment. Am I the only one who's hearing that feedback?
No, I think it's Sean. I think your audio is doing some feedback.
Yeah, Sean, could you...
Yeah, I think, Sean, maybe try log out and log back in.
Or hit control.
Oh, did he?
But if somebody can mute Sean, I think the feedback's coming through his audio.
Well, I'll keep going. "REF's concern regarding the amusement tax is that the application of the broad language of the proposed ordinance to fundraising events conducted by the various small 501(c)(3) nonprofit organizations operating in the township will negatively affect those organizations fundraising's efforts and make it harder for them to fulfill their missions. It is objectionable that the township looks to tax such events, which frequently provide a significant portion of the funds such organizations need to conduct in nonprofit activities. The staff memorandum accompanying the proposed ordinance makes clear that the sole focus of the ordinance is to raise revenue, without regard to the nonprofit organizations which serve so many people here in the township and will be negatively impacted by its adoption and enforcement. The nonprofit groups at risk have modest budgets and rely on fundraising events to provide the resources with which they do their work. We find disingenuous the notion that it is not the small groups putting on fundraising events being taxed, simply because the ordinance provides it is the person attending the event who is responsible for paying tax. It is the group setting the price of the amusement which will be immediately materially impacted. The group will have to provide another 10% for the township to generate the same net amount of revenue. Higher prices for events will result in lower attendance, thereby hurting the nonprofit. Everyone should appreciate the amusement tax ordinance for what it is. A confiscatory act by the municipality making Radnor a 10% partner in the fundraising events small nonprofits conduct to survive and do the work benefiting so many township residents. REF seriously doubts that the revenue raised by adoption of the ordinance warrants the damage to the nonprofit groups affected. Consequently, REF respectfully requests that the members of the Board of Commissioners vote in favor of the motion to repeal Article 1, Chapter 260, amusement tax of the Radnor Township Code. If that motion fails, REF respectfully requests that the Board of Commissioners vote against the adoption of ordinance 2020-18. Thank you for your consideration." And Julia Mitchell writes, "This note is sent by Jeanne and Angie Mitchell, owners of Garrett Hill Ale House in Flippin Bailey's located in the Garrett Hill section of Radnor Township. Regarding the proposed amusement tax, just some brief background on our business. One is completely closed with no sign of opening. The other is limping along and to say struggling would be the understatement of the year. Employees are laid off and really this is the worst crisis we have seen in our 25-plus years in the restaurant and retail business, which includes 9/11 and the financial crisis of 2008. I did a little research on amusement taxes. I found the highest amusement tax in the country was for the city of Chicago at 9%. Villanova is 5%, and Radnor is requesting 10%. We pay a healthy amount of property tax to the township in Radnor, also charges to tax on our sales. So this would be an incremental tax on top of those other two taxes to offer amusement, such as a clown, comedian, band, or juggler to help our business. To believe in some way, shape, or form that these taxes will not be passed along to local consumers is absurd. This additional tax cannot be absorbed by the business itself. Margins are unbelievably thin, and to think a business could survive and absorb a 10% tax is not at all possible. These are particularly difficult times for the world, the U.S. and our community. A repeal in this tax would not defer $300,000 to $400,000 of revenue for the township, as the township has only been collecting $15,000 to $20,000 annually. Let's vote for a complete repeal here rather than burden small businesses or any business this minimal amount of revenue. Regarding outside dining in Garrett Hill, we are petitioning to have the current restriction that prevents outside dining in Garrett Hill removed. Restricting a business from offering a necessary amenity like outside dining is critical to its survival and success. Reasonable restrictions on hours of operation should and would be expected. However, this antiquated restriction should be removed so that we do not continue to lose business to other districts where this is not restricted. Regarding the Garrett Hill Overlay Zoning District, the master plan for this neighborhood is ineffective and should be revised. We are open to working with residents, other businesses, and the community to discuss a better community plan. Since this was adopted 13 years ago, it should be noted that there have been all bold zero improvements to the commercial district, because the limitations are restrictive and overly cumbersome to any sort of progress in this area. While other townships are moving forward, we are stuck in the past. We appreciate the time and support from the Commissioners in hearing our comments and requests on these points. Respectfully submitted, Jeanne and Angie Mitchell." Joe Sumath writes, "As a resident of 117 Garrett Avenue, I have been directly affected by this overlay district that was sprung upon us and approved without even having any input from us. At this point, I want to support my fellow neighbors and business owners in the overlay by continuing to show support for us to be considered the same as our neighbors on our street when it comes to zoning. While half of owners in the overlay district who had our C1 commercial zoning taken away were giving mixed use, the other were spot zoned in a very limited and unfair form called Garrett Hill Neighborhood, which had height restrictions to 30 feet and maximum lot widths. My recommendation, other than completely getting rid of the overlay district and going back to what we were before, would be to remove the high restrictions and maximum lot widths. As for the businesses in the overlay district who are already suffering due to restrictions imposed as a result of this pandemic, I see outdoor dining as a sustainable form of dining for economic stability and for the residents of Radnor to be able to patronize and support those businesses." Sarah Pilling writes, "Sarah Pilling, 29 Garrett Ave. I'd like to remind Radnor's management and commissioners that all of Radnor is experiencing personal, emotional health and financial insecurities, and there isn't one family who isn't suffering. I'm calling on management and commissioners to focus their spending only on essential needs and not to rely on raising fees and taxes to partially cover commercial losses. As hard as I may moderate my living expenses, I've already received notice of a dramatic increase in my medical insurance and fees during COVID, and at age 83, it would be foolhardy to cut here. Thank you." Chris Kabalski writes, "Good evening. I serve as Assistant Vice President for Government Relations and External Affairs at Villanova University. I am writing to express the university's opposition to the proposed update to the amusement tax ordinance, which, if enforced uniformly, will severely impact many nonprofits, businesses, and organizations within Radnor Township, including Villanova. At a time when so many businesses are shuttering their doors forever, nonprofits are struggling to an even greater degree and have been presented with unique funding challenges, lacking the traditional revenue streams of businesses. Radnor and the Main Line are not exempt from these challenges. It is tone deaf for the Radnor Township Commissioners to consider levying what is essentially a new 10% tax on their constituents in the midst of the COVID-19 economic fallout, especially with restrictions in cases on the rise again and an uncertainty that continues to permeate the economy. As Radnor Township seeks to vote on levying this tax, the federal government is in discussion on additional economic relief for affected businesses and nonprofits. In Harrisburg, there are bills and committees seeking to provide aid and temporarily amend laws to strengthen struggling nonprofit organizations. Yet, Radnor seeks to add to their burden rather than ease it in this unprecedented time of need." This proposed update to the amusement tax has been considered by the Board of Commissioners since March. Each time it has appeared on the agenda, the item subsequently has been pulled in response to questions and concerns raised by the Radnor community. The Board now considers a version of the ordinance with language that is meant to limit impact on certain organizations and schools in Radnor. These edits and updates, along with commitment to strict enforcement, has made one thing very clear. This is a tax that is clearly targeted toward Villanova University, and specifically those who pay to attend basketball games on campus. A review of recent Radnor budgets reveals that projected and annual revenues from the amusement tax have totaled roughly $15,000 annually. This is a far cry from saying the township would be giving up $300,000 to $500,000 in revenue if this tax were repealed instead of updated, as Commissioner Larkin stated in a recent email to his constituents. That same email cited multiple specific examples in his efforts to explain the tax, but only one of those specific examples actually takes place in the township, Villanova University Basketball. It is clear that with such a big jump in projected revenues, the targeted language of the ordinance and the efforts to explain it, that the Board of Commissioners is focused on extracting additional money from Villanova. The Board is weaponizing this tax in order to punish the university for being a successful nonprofit, Augustinian Catholic university that is mostly exempt from paying property taxes. It is unfortunate that some commissioners see this federally recognized property tax exemption as a failure to support the township financially, when the university's success is an opportunity to extract money by force, like this new amusement tax language. What these efforts fail to recognize are the many ways in which the university and its operations support the township's bottom line. From direct payments to Radnor in the form of taxes and fees that total nearly $2 million each year, to permits on construction projects at the university, which has averaged more than $100 million annually in capital improvements. From its role as the largest employer in Radnor to its direct local spending and the spending of students and visitors, including patrons' basketball games who eat in Radnor restaurants, shop in Radnor stores, and stay in Radnor hotels. If approved, this updated amusement tax language will translate to higher ticket prices and costs for events and worthwhile causes, and conversely, less money for patrons to spend at area restaurants and other local businesses. All Radnor Township residents can point to a nonprofit or for-profit entity that means something to them and their families that would be adversely affected by this new tax. The university is proud to call Radnor home and counts many alumni, parents, and employees and friends among the township's residents. We are a vibrant contributing member of the community that welcomes our fellow residents onto our campus every day. We are pleased to have a productive working relationship with township staff and work hard to meet the needs and requests brought to us. This has been the university's mission-driven approach since its founding in 1842 and continues today. However, this kind of thinly veiled targeted tax effort at a time of great economic uncertainty is extremely concerning and incredibly disappointing. Please vote to support the entire underscored and italicized Radnor community by repealing the amusement tax. Thank you for your consideration." Fedgie Brennan writes, "Dear Commissioners, on behalf of the trustees of the Radnor Educational Foundation, REF, I would like to express REF's support for the motion to repeal Article 1, Chapter 260, amusement tax of the Radnor Township Code appearing on the Radnor Township Board of Commissioners, November 23rd, 2020 meeting agenda. Similarly, and in case that motion is not adopted, REF wishes to express its opposition to proposed ordinance 2020-18, also scheduled to be considered by the Commissioners this evening." I believe that this is identical to the previous, and in fact, it's signed Brian Q., President. Yes, this is the same letter that I just read. It's just been copied and pasted into the letter, into the email. I guess I'll finish it. "REF's concern regarding the amusement tax is that the application of the broad language of proposed ordinance to fundraising events conducted by the small 501(c)(3) nonprofit organizations operating in the township will negatively affect those organizations fundraising efforts and make it harder for them to fulfill their mission. It is objectionable that the township looks to tax such events, which frequently provide a significant portion of the funds such organizations need to conduct their nonprofit activities. The staff memorandum accompanying the proposed ordinance makes clear that the sole focus of the ordinance is to raise revenue without regard to the nonprofit organizations which serve so many people here in the township and will be negatively impacted by its adoption and enforcement. The nonprofit groups at risk have modest budgets and rely on fundraising events to provide the resources with which they do their work. We find disingenuous the notion that it is not the small groups putting on fundraising events being taxed, simply because the ordinance provides it is the person attending the event who is responsible for paying the tax. It is the group setting the price of the amusement which will be immediately and materially impacted. The group will have to provide another 10% for the township to generate the same net amount of revenue. Higher prices for events will result in lower attendance, thereby hurting the nonprofit. Everyone should appreciate the amusement tax ordinance for what it is. A confiscatory act by the municipality making Radnor a 10% partner in the fundraising events small nonprofits conduct to survive and do the work benefiting so many township residents. REF seriously doubts that the revenue raised by adoption of the ordinance warrants the damage to the nonprofit groups affected. Consequently, REF respectfully requests that the members of the Board of Commissioners vote in favor of the motion to repeal Article 1, Chapter 260, amusement tax of the Radnor Township Code. If that motion fails, REF respectfully requests that the members of the Board vote against the adoption of ordinance 2020-18." This is Bernard Dejeunay. I apologize for butchering your last name and perhaps your first. "Good evening. I would like to start by stating that if the Board of Commissioners continues to show interest in pursuing the adoption of a revised amusement tax after this evening, I respectfully request the opportunity to address the Commissioners directly. Even as we have taken meetings virtual, there are accommodations that would allow you to hear my words in my own voice. For now, I appreciate the opportunity to have my statement read. The Main Line Chamber of Commerce writes in opposition to proposed changes to the Radnor Township amusement tax that will adversely affect our own Radnor-based 501(c)(6) nonprofit business, along with many of our 100 nonprofit members during an already devastating international pandemic. The chamber is made up of more than 900 member businesses located in Delaware, Chester, and Montgomery Counties. We have been busy connecting our members with federal, state, and local loans and grants as government has mobilized to help businesses and nonprofits survive. We have been distributing personal protective equipment while championing mask-wearing and other protective measures to keep people safe and businesses open. This week, we are launching an enhanced shop local marketing initiative that encourages our company's thousands of employees to make holiday purchases in our communities and support restaurants and caterers. We continue to provide leadership development, professional development, and talent acquisition programs designed to help companies hire the college talent they need to succeed from colleges and universities throughout greater Philadelphia. We also offer nonprofit roundtable training to help charities ensure sustainability. We advocate for pro-business policies that will encourage economic strength and a strong tax base while working to ensure that nonprofits thrive in their important missions. It's hard to overstate the impact of government-ordered shutdowns and restrictions on gatherings. Revenue from events helps to fund our work, and events are key to the sustainability of so many of our nonprofit members. Understanding the idea behind these tax changes is to capture revenue from ticket purchasers, the burden of this expansion will fall squarely on the event producers. As a multi-county organization, we hold events throughout the region. It would be easy enough for us to concentrate more events in Ardmore and Malburn, harming venues that pay Radnor taxes and are some of our favorite partners. The disadvantage you would place on Radnor-based meeting venues is one of the negative impacts that I would expect to be among the unintended consequences of this change. One of our 100 nonprofit members is Help Hope Live, which was on the agenda for this evening. These nonprofits address problems and ease suffering. Operating organizations like these is harder than ever in the pandemic. I ask you to conclude that now is not the time to place additional burdens on these organizations." Melanie Johnson writes, "Good evening. Our executive director will not be able to join tonight, so if you need to present the proclamation to someone, I, Melanie Johnson, will be available. Thank you. We very much appreciate the proclamation. Waiting to join the stream now. Thank you." That concludes our public comment, so I will move to the consent agenda. Are there any items of Commissioners you'd like to pull?
Letter E., please.
Okay, E., Resolution 2020-135, Emergency Response Vehicle Storage, Maintenance, and Use Agreement with the County of Delaware. I will so move. Is there a second? Looks like Sean gave me the peace sign over there. I'm gonna count that as a second. Um, Chief, is this you?
It is, sir. Can you hear me?
I got you.
All right, perfect. I don't know. Do you want me just to give a quick overview or do you want to ask for just questions, sir?
Please provide an overview.
Yes, sir. Delaware County Emergency Services contacted the Radnor Police Department and stated, "We were one of five agencies selected in Delaware County to consider accepting an MOU to assist with the pandemic." What that means is that they would be providing at no cost to Radnor Township a fully-equipped F-250 pickup, give or take. I have not seen it yet because it's on order. But this F-250 pickup would have a utility body on it that would hold pandemic storage items and also be available to pull a pandemic response trailer for the entire county of Delaware and obviously Radnor Township. They would supply this vehicle, again, at no cost, fully outfitted on their cost. They are going to pay for the insurance. We would be required to put fuel in the vehicle and any minor repairs, no greater than $500 according to the MOU. It would be dispatched by the county. We would supply an officer when needed. We've never had a pandemic response vehicle, so I don't have statistics on how many times that would be, but it seems a good opportunity for Radnor to have cutting-edge equipment and a partnership with Delaware County with a vehicle that we could utilize for incidents ourselves or towing, since it is a pickup truck."
Are there any questions or Commissioner comment?
Yeah. Why would we want to have police officers doing towing with a pickup truck?
Meaning that the trailer could be used for whatever the vehicle can tow, because it has a tow hitch with it. So if we had to move something of our own and one of our vehicles was out of service or whatever, we would move it with, we could utilize the pickup truck feature of it if required. We do have a police pickup truck.
How was the manning going to be on this? It sounds like this is significant manpower necessary.
Chris, Chris, you're unmuted.
I apologize. Thank you. We would respond with the vehicle and then, based on the scenario or pandemic application, the county would supply staff. In theory, the officer could return once they deliver it, or another officer could go down and pick them up. Let's say it was getting set up at a school for two days. We would drop the equipment, probably the truck off, leave it there, and come back to Radnor Township. So what they need is somebody who's in the area to be able to respond very promptly and take it to a location where, again, we're one of the five designated townships that they picked, or I shouldn't say townships, but municipalities.
Why would they want police to do this instead of medical people or emergency response, or emergency health people? This is, you said this was for COVID response, right?
Correct. It is listed as a pandemic response vehicle. I can only tell you that their design is to have us, since we're around 24/7, we would, in theory, be able to always get the truck out without any delays or other things related to that.
And we have the honor of being only one of five municipalities in the county being requested to do this. I thought you said you had a manning issue. You wanted more, you want additional staffing. This seems to put you further in the hole, doesn't it?
I think the issue would be is if we had an hourly requirement to man it, to your question, we had to man it every weekend for 72 hours. They're using police departments because we have manpower, like I said, 24/7. The goal is to get it to a particular location and then they would take over mitigation. You know, let's just say they're doing, I don't know, process A. We would drop it off and their team would take over. We're just there to get it there so that they can get set up and running quickly. We would come back to the municipality. We don't have specific duties in reference to the particular equipment on there.
What would happen if there's a need when the people are gone delivering the vehicle? That could certainly happen, couldn't it? Say there was a bridge strike or something, that when the people are out delivering the vehicle, we'd have to bring people in.
We would not respond if we were below minimum staffing, if that answers your question, and the truck is under the bridge height. I did check.
Chief, what kind of, you said it's stocked with equipment or supplies? I guess I'm not quite understanding what the use of the vehicle is for. And is it available for our use outside of the use that's in the memorandum of understanding?
Yes, ma'am.
If it's not in use by the county, is it an additional vehicle in our fleet?
Yes, ma'am. It is an additional vehicle to our fleet. We would be able to use it, say, we needed to block a street or rid a shortage of vehicles, as long as the county doesn't need it for its intended use, which, again, is listed as a pandemic response. It will have certain equipment inside the truck and it can tow one of the trailers. I haven't seen it. I wish I could give you a little better description of it. And then the goal is just, we would help rapidly deploy it, then they would take over at the related mission. But if we had a major road closure in the township and we needed another vehicle to put out somewhere, or we brought extra people in, we could utilize that vehicle if we were short.
Mark, do you have any other questions, sir?
No, that's it. Your turn.
How's it gonna be wrapped? Not Radnor Police. It'll be wrapped with something of the county. And then when this pandemic ends, hopefully soon, or sooner than later, what happens to the vehicle? Do we own it? Can we keep it? Do we give it back?
On the MOU, Commissioner, it stated they were gonna take care of all expenses. That included the lettering of the vehicle. It is gonna stay with a standard county logo. They sent some ideas to the sticker shop, but if you've seen them, they're all white vehicles with blue. And then they want the township, the municipality that houses it, whoever accepts it, to put their respective patch on there in a smaller way. But it'll be very clearly noted as a county vehicle, and it'll follow a standard guideline that they have. And we're just waiting for the proof. Otherwise, I'd send it to you because I think it's gonna be an all-white vehicle and it would have some type of reflective stripe on it. And although it is pandemic-centric, they're also hoping to load it with some equipment, which we met on a virtual conference the other day. So let's just say there'd be five breaching tools, couple of active shooter bags, meaning so that you can stop bleeding and other things. They would come up with a county policy so that it would be five vehicles across the county that have similar equipment that would respond out on a major incident. And we would, so that would allow us to keep it, even though, let's hope the pandemic is a thing of the past in the near future.
Thank you, Chief.
And Chief, would this, is there a possibility that this vehicle could be dispatched to media, to Springfield, other parts of the county with Radnor officers?
I'm gonna say yes, sir.
Okay.
I don't have a SOP for, I should say, a standard operating procedure. Commissioner Underlee knew what I was talking about, but the SOP for that has not been designated yet from the county, and they're waiting a couple of vehicles to arrive.
Okay, thank you. That's my question.
Are you finished, Damien?
I am. Thank you.
Oh, do you mind? So I just wanna ask, so to the question of, so you said there's five of them. There's gonna be five, and there's five different municipalities that are gonna be responsible for them. Would they all be responding at the same time? So to Commissioner Booker's question, if you guys aren't in a position to have someone, you know, leave a situation to take this when it gets called, there are other responsive trucks, or do they all have to respond at the same time?
So I would say that the answer is yes and no, ma'am. I think that there could be a county all-call to Commissioner Underlee's point, where it would go out and that vehicle, all the vehicles could merge on a major incident. In the same breath, if there was a problem in Chester, they wouldn't be sending our Radnor, I shouldn't say Radnor Police, but they wouldn't send the Radnor unit to Chester. There's gonna be probably three other police departments, agencies in line beforehand that would have the same equipment and it wouldn't require us to respond. I hope I'm answering it.
You are. I mean, I understand that it's difficult to know. But I think that one thing in, you know, in the MOU, it's definitely called an emergency response vehicle. I guess right now, it's the, you know, the idea that it would help, you know, with pandemic-related, you know, emergencies. But I'm guessing that this is going to be around for a long time. So, you know, it's gonna have multiple uses. It's not just gonna be here, and then when the pandemic is over, it'll be gone.
Correct. I think they'll make it mission-specific. As things change or emergencies, whatever the nature is, they would probably update the vehicles respectively throughout the county to meet those missions. And then a couple of them have different, a couple of municipalities that will get these trucks, have a little bit of different equipment, but there'll be standardized equipment and then a little bit of different equipment. and then a little bit of different equipment. And I can't answer to exactly what those are because they haven't, like I said, they're not all in yet and then they'll lay it all out.
Chief, what type of training is involved here?
As for right now, they haven't asked us for any mission-specific training, Commissioner. So it'd be just operating a SUV, you know, an SUV pickup, which our officers are trained in emergency vehicle operation already. So at this point in time, I don't have any new news. Could they ask us to plug something in or start a generator? Certainly, once the thing comes loaded, I would know more to that. But right now, as far as man-hours or specialized training or cost of attention to that, there's none on the agenda at this point in time.
And play the scenario out, if you guys respond to a call and you get there and they say they need additional support, are our units required to stay on site?
The vehicle itself could be asked for and then we would go back. Our mission, the way it's been explained to me, is once we drop it off and get it where it needs to be and secured, then it's up to the county to handle the specifics. As you were advised, it's a pandemic response vehicle. They would take that stuff out and put it where it need to be. We would be done, our mission, until they were done with the truck and we would come back and get it.
Well, I mean, I'm open to having more discussion on this. I just, I think there's still too many unanswered questions for me to support it at this point.
It sounds like it's the county offloading some of their expense on these five municipalities, including Radnor. Did Elaine Paul Schaefer or somebody from the county specifically ask us for this? Or how did we get involved with this?
We, along with the five municipalities, were asked by Delaware County Emergency Services Director Tim Boyce, said that we were selected for a vehicle at their total expense and cost, asked us to, and I kind of went over what our mission would be with the vehicle, a transporter of it, and it's part of their countywide response plan. There's some tactical ones that are already out in existence and they're adding five new ones, I believe, to the three that are in the county. But I'm not 100% sure how many previous vehicles are, I just know five are coming in within the next four months.
But the manning of that is to be paid for by Radnor Township taxpayers. And that could run, that could be expensive. We really can't tell how much that is. So I would reject this at this point.
Are there any additional questions? Is there any staff comment?
Hearing none, I will call the vote. All in favor of item 2E, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes. It looked like five to two.
That's correct. That's my count as well.
Yeah.
Excellent. Okay, for the balance of the consent agenda, items 2A through D, F, and G, I will so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Since it's a consent agenda, I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. I'm going to say that passes unanimously. Item three, proclamation to Help Hope Live. Unfortunately, we can't do this in person where we actually hand over an item to say thank you for the work that you guys are doing, but I'm going to read this into the record. Board of Commissioners of Radnor Township proclamation, Help Hope Live, Giving Tuesday. Whereas the organization Help Hope Live, a nonprofit organization that helps people fundraise to pay for medical expenses that are not covered by insurance. They have been in business 37 years and are located in Radnor. And whereas Giving Tuesday began as a response to the commercialization and consumerism of the post-Thanksgiving Black Friday shopping. The premise of Giving Tuesday is that it is a day for anyone, anywhere to give to the nonprofit of their choice. And whereas, on this day, millions of people around the world support causes and communities they believe in or live near. In 2019, Giving Tuesday raised $511 million and elicited more than $20 billion social media posts. And whereas, Prelude Solutions of Pennsylvania has pledged to be a partner in Hope. Now therefore, the Board of Commissioners of Radnor Township proclaimed Giving Tuesday in Radnor Township on December 1, 2020. We encourage residents and business owners of Radnor to participate in this globally-recognized day of giving by supporting local charities like Help Hope Live. Hashtag Give Local. Resolve this 23rd day of November 2020, A.D., Township of Radnor, Pennsylvania. Item 4A, resolution number 2020-136, Radnor Township, a resolution.
Don't we have to vote on that? No?
I thought it was just a proclamation. This is not a resolution that I can see. Bill, are we voting on this?
No.
The proclamation does have your signature on it, Jack, so if you want the board to have a vote to go with that, then probably not a bad idea.
Okay, we can do a vote. I will move for the Help Hope Live proclamation. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any commissioner comment? Hearing none, is there any?
Wait, 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 a comment. How did this get onto the board? I don't know Help Hope Live. I don't know the organization. I haven't heard of it.
Which we, we've done this the past two years, I think. They came forward to us back when I was president. We did it, I think we've done it at least twice before, if not at least once.
I might have missed. I don't, so these people are friends of yours, Lisa?
No, but they are an organization in Radnor Township. They came forward at the time when I was president. They reached out to me. I, you know, we put it on the agenda. They attended at the time. We did a whole thing about it. It's really just to, it's really more ceremonial to kick off Giving Tuesday.
And can you read, again, what is their function? How do they, what do they do?
It says in here that they provide healthcare, they help people pay, fundraise to pay for medical expenses.
Is there any additional commissioner comment? Hearing none, is there any staff comment? I don't have any public comment on this, so I'll call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. The proclamation passes unanimously. Moving on to item 4A. Resolution number 2020-136, 208 North Aberdeen Avenue Land Development, six townhouses. Final, preliminary final approval. I will so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I see that we have a lot of people from the developers, so I'm going to ask one of you guys to jump in and give us a rundown on this.
Sure, Nick Camelia here. We've provided all the comments, all the review letters that the township staff has commented on. I believe we are requesting two waivers. One waiver is the 500-foot showing all public improvements. We have provided a photo, an aerial of that and indicated the public improvements on the aerial. This is a common waiver request, the board is well aware. And the other waiver request was a request to have this planned, considered as a preliminary final plan. I believe there were a number of issues raised last time, one of which was the driveway, which we kind of addressed at the very end of our comments during the caucus. This project is a multifamily residential development and is controlled by 255-40 of the SALDO of the subdivision code. That particular code provision provides that driveway shall be planned for convenient circulation, suitable for traffic needs and safety. And basically that there's no specific requirement on the driveway width. And you may recall in review letters, that was raised and we did widen that driveway. The provision that has been referred to by, I guess, some of the tonics of the project is that Section 29 of the code is applicable. And that's the one that talks about widths of cartways and width of driveways being 25 feet. I'd like to point out that that provision of the code deals with parking facilities. This is not a parking facility. And the definition of parking facilities in the code is that it's required for all off-street parking facility capacity of three or more vehicles. This does not have capacity for three or more vehicles. You have, each unit has its own parking. There are two parking spaces provided, more than two actually, provided in the rear of the building if so desired, you know, for the additional parking that's required. We believe that we've complied with all the provisions of the SALDO, all provisions of the zoning laws, and request those two waivers. And if the board obviously doesn't grant those two waivers, then we'll move forward and have to redraft our plans and we will comply with it. But both of them are common waivers that are requested in any development. Certainly happy to answer any questions raised by the board. And also, I know township staff may want to weigh in on some of the comments that have been raised as well.
So I'm going to have some questions, but I know that others do as well. I'm happy to go last.
So I guess I can just jump in. You know, at the last meeting, we talked about being able to get, you know, fire vehicles and rescue vehicles back into that area. And I was told that we don't need to do that, or there won't be a desire for that to happen. I guess, you know, when we went through the development of the townhouses up on, I think, Meadowwood, the one that's over, up by the Wayne Art Center, we spent a lot, a lot of time talking about those driveways and making sure that, you know, a vehicle, a rescue or a fire truck could get in there and turn around and maneuver and do what it needs to do. So I guess, you know, I'm wondering why that's not as important, like why doesn't a fire truck, and I don't know anything about fighting fires, why does a fire truck need to get back in there? What if it does? How does it get back there? How do you determine when you go back there or not? What if there's a fire behind that building? You know, I guess I'm just concerned that, you know, we aren't being consistent with, you know, with what we need to do in order to make sure that things are safe and accessible.
Remember that, that development off of Maplewood, actually, that was a street that was placed in there. And obviously, that the fire trucks had to be able to access the individual dwellings from that street. In this instance, as was discussed last time, the fire would actually be fought from the front. The fire truck would not go in behind the buildings anyway because, you know, that's not the way we fight it, we'd be too close to the building and be far from the street anyway. And I don't know if Patrick or Steve or someone could confirm that. I'm not, you know, an expert on fire safety, so I have to defer to the other professionals on that.
And can you talk to me a little bit about the visitor parking and what we're doing about that? It's, you know, again, it's my understanding that the visitor parking spaces are being, it's not exactly, so we're using the spaces, the idea is that people would have to move their cars in order, you know, for them to actually be visitor parking spaces. How's that working?
Now, the visitor parking spaces would be behind the garage. And I don't know if we can call and plan there. Patrick, can Patrick have a shared screen? If you want to show that.
Yeah, I'm seeing if I can do it now.
So does that count, though, as visitor parking if it's just behind somebody's garage?
Yes, it does. Again, there's no provision in this code regarding this type of parking that cannot be behind another spot. That is a provision that, again, relates to parking facilities. There's nothing in the multiple dwelling that prevents that. You'll say it, Patrick, if you want to show where the visitor parking would be located.
All right, so the driveways behind the garages are 20 feet long, 16 feet wide. And of course, we have the five spaces in the front for off-street, for on-street parking.
Now, but we want to make certain that those five spaces are not being counted as part of the visitor parking, even though it does exist. You know, we've stated all along that those five spaces are additional, basically for the neighborhood, and it's really more of a road improvement than parking. You know, any development has on-street parking and we're just providing an easier area for the public as a public improvement to be able to park in that location. That's not being counted against the parking requirement for this development.
Can you show me, like, just because I'm, you know, looking, so I think what I'm looking at is along the bottom is that's the street, is that Aberdeen? And then are the spots kind of diagonal or perpendicular to the street? I'm trying to.
This is Aberdeen right here.
Okay.
This is Aberdeen right here. This is the driveway going back from Aberdeen behind the units. And then these are the individual accesses to the garage for each unit. And these are the garage spaces.
And then where's the visitor parking? That's, where are you suggesting that visitor parking is?
They would be able to park in the driveway or behind the garages in these spots. We're required to have two, and in effect, we have six, at least six.
Could you switch your selection tool to the hand? That little crosshatch is very difficult to see on screen. Thanks.
Is that better?
Yeah.
So how much visitor parking are you required to have?
Two.
Two.
Two per unit?
No, two total.
Two total.
Two total visitor parking spots? And you're counting those as behind people's garage? They don't need to be separate?
Correct.
How many are the garages for a two-car garage? One car?
Correct.
Two. Two. So the driveways are the width of two cars?
The driveway is the width of a double garage, excuse me, double garage door, which is 16 feet. And then we provide 19 feet clear inside the garage itself.
Yeah, we're required to provide parking spaces that are a minimum of nine and a half by 20. So each unit inside the garage has two parking spaces that are nine and a half by 20.
And can you just, so there was one thing that I learned that the, so I thought that that pool building was coming down as part of this project. So that is not happening? That pool building is staying?
This house? Are we talking about 210, North Aberdeen? Is that what you mean by pool building?
They're talking about 210.
Correct. My understanding, 210, which is what you're talking about, where the storefrontage used to be for American Steel, that is being renovated.
Okay, but that's not part of this project.
Correct. It is not.
Wasn't that part of the zoning change? Wasn't that supposed to be part of the zoning change, though, that we made?
Nick, I believe the zoning change applied to all C3. It wasn't.
Yeah, I believe that could be subject, let's put this way, that could be developed under the zoning change, but the intent is not to develop in that manner.
Okay.
First, you correct me if I'm wrong. I know you're wrong here somewhere.
I would have to evaluate whether or not it had the lot width that would be required to comply with the requirements for the residential option of the zoning change. But this is the property that has the house that had the fire in it. But this is the property that has the house that had the fire in it and going south from there where the large stockade fence is, Lisa. So that's, that's the property. The pool building is on a separate parcel, and it goes all the way back to Cowan Alley. So we've always been talking about just this 208 parcel.
Okay, thank you.
Can I jump in here?
Absolutely.
So you said that there's six parking spots, and some of them are going to be directly behind the garages, so they're going to block someone that has a car in the garage? Am I correct on that?
It would be...
Yeah, good.
No, go ahead, that's accurate.
Okay, so...
Yeah, it's not public parking.
Hold on more, let me finish my question here.
I was just clarifying.
So, so it's not really, it's not really a parking spot. It's more of an egress or, you know, how you get in the garage or out of the garage. And, and that's not part of visitor parking. Visitor parking would be a spot, but I'm not going to park on my neighbor's garage and, or have a friend park in my neighbor's, block my neighbor's garage because they may need to get out. I'm correct on that? So you're just blocking a car inside a driveway? That's not a, that's not, I don't know, I don't see that as visitor parking. That would be specific visitor parking to someone's house, but not specific to the entire complex.
So we would be required to provide two visitor spots. We, in effect, are providing one per unit that presumably would be used for each unit if I was to park into the neighboring driveway. That would, that wouldn't be very nice, but I would not park there. I would park in the unit I'm visiting.
Okay, I don't know, I just, I don't see it.
To follow up on Sean's question there, Patrick and Nick, a common driveway, I'm sorry, the, the two visitor parking spaces can't block that accessway, and those really, those parking spaces are going to block the person who has the visitor. So that shouldn't, that's not what the intent of it is. A, the visitor's parking can't be, can't be blocking the parking spots in the garage.
Why not? My visitors park in my driveway. Is it, I mean, is it a code that it can be?
This is not, this is not a single-family home. This is a multi, and... It's the same concept. 255-29 says, "A parking access in a driveway cannot block other parking spaces in the garage." Rich, as I stated, 255-29 is not applicable to this development. Why's that? Because if you read the definition of 255-29, it talks about parking facilities, and there is a specific provision in the code that deals with multiple dwellings. This is not a parking facility.
Steve Norcini, could you sanity check that? Is that right?
Hi, Commissioners. So from the basis of the code, that is what staff in our review, we concur with that. I'm not going to say we concur with applicant. We concur with that interpretation of the code, but that is acceptable.
I get the point is, if someone has two visitors, and their two visitors are parking, blocking their driveway, their cars in the garage, there are other people in that house who aren't being visited, might need to get out, can't get out. So I think it doesn't comport with the spirit of it. The, the two spots need to be not blocking the driveway. So that's my position.
Well, we can't, we can't choose not to vote for this because we don't like it. We're required to approve anything that comes to us that meets the requirements of our SALDO and our zoning ordinance. We're not required to grant waivers, including the two minimal ones that have been asked for, so I guess we could hold them up a little bit by asking them to come back with a more detailed set of plans and do a second and final, I guess they'd have to come back for preliminary again if they didn't get the waiver on the plan, but they would do that and they would still end up going forward. My question is, is there something that violates our zoning ordinance or SALDO? I'm hearing no from staff. That's what seems to be in the letter. I've had a lot of conversations with at least one resident. I've gotten two emails, or I've gotten emails from two. We're hitting a lot of those items. And I'm hearing from staff that there's not actually a violation there.
Commissioner Larkin, if I may add, I think this highlights the reason, if there's consternation on the board with how our ordinance reads and how subdivision and land development comes through, this really highlights the need to go through our ordinances and update them, and, you know, whether it be zoning, subdivision land development, stormwater management. So these are ways to address concerns with more specificity, less ambiguity on various situations.
All right, I have a few more.
Rich, Rich, can I just, Rich, can I jump in? Rich, can I jump in on the parking issue real quick?
Sure, go ahead.
Nick, Nick, I can't see the, I mean, I'm sorry, I just can't see the plan on the screen. Can you show me how the parking spaces in the garage are marked? So you said, you said they are nine and a half by 20?
Patrick.
They're labeled wrong on the plan. It's one of the comments that township engineer has given us that we need to correct.
Patrick, can you enlarge that? Can you enlarge that some?
Does that work?
Yeah, it shows, okay. Can you, can you mention, I don't think you need to see all of them, but can you mention to Jake what he's referring to and what you're referring to?
Right, so here, right, so here we're showing the two garage spaces, and this dash line is 18 feet wide. It really should be 19 feet wide. This should say nine and a half.
And we do provide that?
Yes.
Okay, and so where does that, where does that, that drive end? So if there, if there was a car in that last spot and had to back out, does it have space to turn around?
Right, so it would have to, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead, Patrick, if you can show with the cursor.
Right, yeah, so it would have to back up. There's a swing area here that will allow them to come back into this corner and then swing out this way.
So how much space is back there to pull out?
This is, this is 20 feet right here. Then there's another 16 and a half feet. This here is approximately four feet. So they would have this 36 feet behind the garage, have four feet or so to swing the back end over, and then be able to pull forward and cut it past this island here and keep going.
Okay, seems like an unusual, but I'd have to think about that. It seems tight to back, depending on what size car you have. Are there restrictions on the garages? Like, so can somebody, can a future owner of the unit build out into the garage?
Jake, we would restrict them from being permitted to do that through the Homeowners' Association documents, so it would always be a garage.
Yeah, they would be in violation of the zoning ordinance if they did that. So obviously, the homeowners would restrict that.
Okay, all right, and then, Rich, sorry, sorry, I said one, but my last point, someone mentioned consistency earlier on in this discussion, and just to remind the board that we rejected the plan on Maplewood for being too dense. This project, this plan before us is three times more dense than that Maplewood project is.
Although you will remember, Jake, that that was a unique, narrow-type development, and we needed multiple waivers on that.
Yeah, I'm going to jump in. We did not reject any plan for being too dense. We rejected any plan that we have rejected in the plans in the past, including Maplewood, for failing to meet our zoning ordinance or SALDO.
Remember, that was eventually approved.
It was.
Okay, I have a few here. So first of all, I don't think I agree that the section 255 does not apply. This is a parking facility for a multi-unit dwelling. But first of all, it looks like you widened the access drive. Is that now 25 feet? Down at the bottom of that picture? Is that 25?
No, this is 17 feet.
So it's the same as it was? It's not wider?
It's a little wider. It was 16. We came up, we put it as wide as we could based on staff comments. So the actual cartway is 17 feet and an inch or so.
Okay, again, I would say I think the 25-foot requirement applies. And also, my reading, a common driveway cannot provide access to more than three dwelling units. And again, that's 255. Counselor, you're saying that that doesn't apply here? This is, this is providing one access, 17 foot to six driveways. And as Lisa pointed out, it's very tight, and, and you might want to have fire equipment back there because a fire might be in the back and you wouldn't want to fight it from the front. So we have accessing more than three dwelling units and not 25 feet. So explain to me again why that, you think that doesn't apply? The first part of your question, Rich, I'm sorry, was, I think he has two questions there. I have two questions. 25 feet, and this driveway is accessing more than three units. Remember, this is one lot. This is not, you know, a driveway that acts at that, a long driveway that has three homes on it. This is one lot that we're talking about in the Homeowners' Condo Association type of development. By that rationale, if any driveway would be limited to three dwelling units, you would have no condominium or townhouse developments at all. I mean, Bloomingdale Avenue, you know, wouldn't have gone through. The one on West Plain Avenue has been there for several years now. Why? I forget, drawing a blank on the name of it. You know, so it's illogical to say that a driveway can only have three dwelling units. Remember, this is one lot. I believe that's what staff had said previously, too. This is one lot, and what you have is, you have a homeowners association that basically gives you the right to the boundary of the actual structure itself. It seems, Nick, like you're picking and choosing, it's a, it's a parking facility, you just said, for this condo development and then it's single-family residences when it's applicable. So going on to parking again, a little bit more on parking. Two off-street overflow parking spaces are required, and, and, and they don't have any, that doesn't meet that requirement. Well, I think we showed you how it does. All right, I disagree. The, the on-street parking is not setback from the right-of-way of the street. It's... Hey, Rich, we, I mean, we did that as a courtesy to the residents there. We feel it's a public improvement. If the township does not want it, we'll take it out. It doesn't affect our development. But we think it's good for the people in the neighborhood. That's why we put it in there. They requested it. Well, it might not be good for all the people that are other neighbors that are using the roadway there.
No, the other neighbors very definitely want the parking there.
Well...
Rich, right, right now, there is on-street parking on this street. What we're talking about is not changing whether or not there's on-street parking on North Aberdeen. We're talking about creating more space for the parking that, that is happening so that it can be a safer condition and traffic can flow more smoothly there. But, but Nick is exactly right. It's, it is not required for our project. And again, we look at it as more of a road widening than a provision of the required parking. It's not required. So if the township determines that it is undesirable, we could take it off the plan.
Well, having people parallel park in and out through there, that is a busy section of the road. So, I mean, that, that could be, it's unusual. It's definitely unusual, and that's especially in that very tight area right there.
On-street parking is the norm in this very tight area. That is the parking here.
Yeah, and again, the residents will, the residents will not be pleased if they lose, what is that, five parking spots?
Correct.
I've heard from two properties on North Aberdeen that have been very adamant for that on-street parking.
I also like to point out that we're not, this parking is, is out of the existing cartway. So the existing cartway is running right down here, and we are extending into the property in effect. It's the right of, still within the right-of-way to put this parking in. So we're not reducing the cart width at all to provide this parking.
In effect, we're increasing it, but right now, there's existing parking there, and it narrows, in effect, it narrows...
Correct.
...travel area. We're actually making it larger.
This is sidewalk? Oh, I'm sorry. Is it a sidewalk that is running parallel with the parking there?
Correct. This is sidewalk right here.
I understand that you think it's desirable, but there's no provision for that, and I'm worried about precedent and unforeseen situations. All right, let me move on here. You said, you talked to Patrick about, the parking spaces show nine by 20. They need to be 9.5 in the garage. You said they were...
Correct, so it's labeled incorrectly.
So...
And that we, and we provide 19 feet clear inside the foundation walls.
Rich, if we didn't provide two spots, nine and a half by 20, they would not get building permits to build these units. So I would suggest change the drawing then, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's one of the comments in the, in the letters that we agreed to. All those front stoops, now going on to zoning, all the, all the front stoops there, don't they violate the front yard setback? Six front, all those, those door stoops, they're, they're not, they violate the front yard setback requirement.
They're not, they're not planned to be covered.
The definition of the setback prohibits buildings. Buildings have walls and roofs under your definitions. These, these are steps and uncovered stoops that were shown on this plan.
Finally, the, back to the driveway, coming in and out of the, the parking facility there, when you're coming out, and, excuse me, the people who are familiar with the road there, you know Aberdeen has a lot of traffic. So when you're coming out, you're making a right-hand turn. Anybody coming up the hill and making that turn is going to have their vision obstructed by people parking. in those, there's all-street, those five spots that you put in for parallel parking. So that looks to me to be an obstruction, obstruction area that could be dangerous. Is there any?
We don't feel it is, Rich. Again, you know, if the township wants us to take those out, we will. We don't think it's desirable.
Go ahead.
We're trying to build developments in harmony with what is there. We've had many, many meetings with the residents over there and they've expressed certain desires and we've attempted to accommodate them. And one of the main desires was not to decrease the amount of all-street parking because many of these homes do not have driveways and so they do park on the street.
I think six, how high are these houses going to be too, by the way?
They will comply with whatever the code is.
What does the code say?
35 feet average height. And because what we're talking about here is a walkout basement essentially, that takes the average from the higher front yard and the lower rear yard. So it's like we've been talking about, it's a pitched roof, two and a half, you know, it's a two-story with a pitched roof that we're proposing. And then the garage is sort of the walkout basement level. And on that street, if you can picture it, the homes on the opposite side are two stories, but they are higher. This, there's a cross slope from the east side of Aberdeen. Patrick, if you can help me with the orientation. East side is high and it goes down as you head west. So the homes across the street are high, up on hills with retaining walls next to the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Just to sort of give you a sense of what the neighborhood there is.
Yeah, I know. I drive on the street two, three, five times a week. It's going to be big. It's going to be big houses there in a very small space. I feel more comfortable with five rather than six. This is going to be like the other development around the corner that what they called it, the shabby chic, whatever. What was it called? Shabby and chic industrial or something?
Industrial chic.
Industrial chic, yeah, that's right.
It's intended to have different architecture than that, but in the case that it's a, that was a blighted property and this is a blighted property, it's going to be redeveloped with beautiful new homes. I guess that is, does have some similarities there, but different architecture.
It's similar in the size is what I'm saying, the massing of it is what I'm thinking.
Well, those have a flat roof, so the massing is, has a fair difference. Also, those have front garages and so their streetscape is quite different than what we're thinking of for this location.
So may I just ask, Rich, were you finished? I'm sorry.
I'm done, I'm done.
Okay. May I just ask one more question? So, and this is definitely not my area of expertise. So, you know, I have some people that have asked me this question. Is there a way, can you, is there supposed to be a 10-foot buffer all around based on this new zoning? Or if there, can you show where that is going all around or no? Is that not required?
It's not required. This is, remember, this is, this whole area is zone commercial. This is a human learning district. And if we were backing up to residential district or bordering a residential district, then perhaps it would be required. But in this instance, everything's C3. Everything's already zone commercial. So there's no requirement for it to be totally zoned. We do provide some buffering areas we see on the plan. That's really at the applicant's desire to do that. And it's more for screening for the residents of this development.
So there doesn't need to be anything down there along the side of the driveway?
That's correct. And I believe staff agrees with that as well.
Steve, can you comment on that for me, please?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Yes, staff does concur with the, that a buffer is not required on that south side. And again, we confer with the code, not with the applicant.
Because there is a house right next to that, right? There's another house right on the other side of that driveway.
If I may add to that, that is correct. There's multifamily houses along Pennsylvania that back up to this site. And under the code, in the C3, I'm a required buffer districts. A multifamily budding up against a multifamily does not require a buffer.
So I have two questions. I had more, but most of them have been asked and answered already. I'm not sure that this makes a difference with respect to the approvals, but it's been a question that's been asked of me and I was interested. What's the plan for trash takeout?
It would be brought out to, sorry, Christie.
Go ahead, Patrick.
It would be brought out to the curb for curbside pickup.
Okay, so if I'm in the middle of the unit, I've got a fairly long walk to get all the way around to the end.
It's not, it's not that long in comparison to some drives in the township, but it's longer than the ends. That's right. It's longer than the ends. That's true.
Is this going to be township trash or is this going to be a private hauler?
We would think that it would be township trash, but that's a detail that we can discuss. Because it would be curbside pickup, we would think that that would be, you know, we wouldn't imagine a dumpster for this kind of community.
Okay, Commissioner, we'll check our code on the trash pickup and if they're available, like if it's available to this development as it is to other residents, that's fine. If it is not, we'll inform the applicant and they'll have to make arrangements otherwise.
And then generally, my question is to staff, Steve, Roger, Damon, whomever wants to jump in. I've looked at your review letter. I understand from it that these guys meet the requirements of our SALDO and our zoning ordinance. Is there anything, I know that there's been a lot of emails that you guys have received just in the last couple of hours. Is there anything that causes you to revise your decision on that?
I won't speak for Roger and Damon. I'll ask them to speak for themselves, but no, sir. Based on the emails received, no change on that.
I agree, no change. And with discussions with the applicant and the engineer, I believe all of the comments in the letters were, will comply. And certainly if our letters are made part of the resolution, then they have to satisfy those comments. They will do that before anything will be approved.
Is there any additional commissioner comment?
No, I, you know, and I know that, you know, staff has heard from some residents and, you know, certainly so have the commissioners. So I don't want to be misrepresenting this as if I'm some sort of all-sudden zoning genius. I'm asking these questions. So I am just going to step back to the buffer. I've been asked to look at section 280-36, section B, which is around the side and rear property line, abutting residence area that's not devoted to apartment use adjoining. It needs a buffer planning strip. I just want to make sure that, you know, or if we can explain as to why this is different. And Roger, I know you kind of just went through it a little bit, but if we could clearly explain why we feel that this does not need to comply with that.
280 what now?
280, 280-36, which, item B or point B, whatever.
Lisa, I can refer you to 25542, which is buffer screens in the SALDO, which dictates what buffer screens are required when budding up against different zoning districts or different uses. As Nick had stated earlier, this use, or this whole area is C3, which the underlying zoning is commercial for this. There is a buffer screen that's required on the north and the west side of the property, which is being provided. And that is because this use then becomes a multifamily use bordering against the commercial portions of this district. So those buffers are being provided and I'm sure Patrick, if he can, can show you the landscaping plan. It was part of the submittal. So that's satisfied. And beneath that and in the back of the SALDO, if you're flipping through the code like I am right now, 25542 refers to a table in the back that shows that a multifamily bordering a multifamily does not require a buffer. Now, if you want to repeat that zoning section that you had mentioned to me earlier that was emailed to you, I can try to read through that while we're sitting here and give you my opinion on that.
It is 280-36.
I would point out, Roger says that 255 does apply, Nick. And 255 is where we get the requirement for two off-street.
If I, Mr. Booker, if I can correct you on that for a second, 255 is the subdivision and land development ordinance and obviously that does apply. The question was, it was 25529, which refers to parking facilities. So subdivision and land development applies. Every item in the subdivision and land development does not apply to every individual project.
The requirement for two off-street parking comes from what section?
That is one online in the section 25529. I don't have the number in front of me. I can pull it up for you in a second.
That's my point. So we recognize that requirement. I don't understand why we say that this doesn't apply. Again, I'd be more comfortable with five houses here, getting a wider drive aisle and room for the people on the end to turn around and a little bit less. Lisa's point is there's no landscaping next to that other dwelling at the next door. And you can see from this drawing right here. So I agree with that as well. One house less would be much better.
Yeah, I agree. We just don't get to draw the plans for them. They have to comply with our code in our SALDO. And if they do, then they're entitled to an approval, although they're not entitled to waivers necessarily. So there's two that they're requesting, which are pretty de minimis, but we're not required to give it to them.
Well, again, it's a matter of, you know, opinion on the applicability of certain sections. And I'm not, I disagree that, I disagree with the conclusions that these other provisions don't apply.
Well, the people we pay to be the experts in this are telling us what they think.
I understand that. We don't always agree, even with many, many experts.
Yeah, the problem that I have is if we were to.
Other experts may disagree as well.
Well, I haven't heard from another expert who does. But the problem is if we, if we weren't, we ultimately were not to approve the plan. Forget about the waivers they're requesting, but if we ultimately choose not to approve the plan and our own experts have already told us pretty clearly that they meet the requirements, we're going to lose when they take an appeal.
We're going to lose what?
We're going to lose when they take an appeal. I mean, they're just going to point to the review letters that they've received and say, the township agrees with us that we've ticked all the appropriate boxes. And John Rice is going to have to be in the position of explaining to a court why the township engineer and all of its reviewers were wrong. Which, I mean, God bless him, but that's going to be a tough, tough road for him to hope. Is there any additional commissioner comment? We do have public comments on this. Is there any staff comment? Okay, public comment. This is from Susan Stern. Dear Board, other aspects of 255-29 were referenced in the review letter. Why not the entire portion of 255-29? Gene Mitchell writes, Mr. Booker, you ask as to why the cars in the driveway should block the egress to the cars in the garage. If the people in the driveway are specific to the house, which you acknowledge, why would my friend or family member not move the car for me to exit? Tough times never last. Tough people do. Kind regards, Gene Mitchell. Susan Stern writes again, the review letters look at 255-29 and the applicant responded, never saying 255-29 doesn't apply. That argument is not applicable because 255-40, multifamily, doesn't address parking at all. So obviously, 255-29 applies. There are two specific concerns that have both been raised by Sue Stern. I'm going to start by asking staff if you could address those. And we just got another comment. I'll read that after you guys had a chance to respond to Sue. Anybody? Steve? Roger?
Commissioner, if I may, so we're thumbing through our various ordinances as we speak. My request would be if we're going to give staff the chance to go through these, if you could email us these comments. So we're going back between all these different areas of the ordinance and we're doing it on the fly without having a chance to truly research it. And I think that leaves a chance for error in our haste to make a statement. So I would request if that's the case, bundle those up, whatever the board wants to know. We will go back as staff and discuss it as a group, go through them. If there's something that we concur with, we'll note that. If not, we'll show why. But I think it's tough to do on the fly unless Roger wants to come up and I, or Nick wants to try to bring something up as representing the applicant. But I would request then that either the board table this or however they want to deal with it to give staff the opportunity to thoroughly research these requests.
Well, let me read Barron's comment and I have forwarded you the emails that have come in on this. Barron Gemmer, South Wayne. I continue to hear many misstatements about the SALDO and zoning interpretations, which are nearly impossible to respond to with a spur-of-the-moment email versus being able to speak at a podium and respond in a more spontaneous manner. I stand by all the comments I sent to the board earlier today, many of which were applied under the exact same circumstances to other developments. This is a parking facility of 12 parking spaces. Satisfying that through individual garages does not change that. The requirement of two overflow parking spaces comes from 255-29. All of it applies. I mean, I'm hearing the same thing from both Barron and Susan, which they're saying that section 255-29 applies.
So Commissioner, if I may, and so the reviewers disagree with that. With great respect for Ms. Stern and the other resident, but we disagree with that, with their interpretation thereof. So again, if you want us to get together with a solicitor and go through this, I am fine with our comments to this point. There is room for, some room for interpretation and Ms. Sterns and the other resident have a different one. So at that, I don't know how you wish to proceed.
Nick, what's our timing on this? How close are we to 90 days?
Yeah, I think we gave you a pretty long extension. Roger, do you have that there?
I just saw it in the paperwork. The extension's 90 days after the emergency response order is lifted, so.
Oh, wow. So until the end of time?
Yeah, I know. Oh, wow. I did not find that. I did not send that in.
It is, it is almost indefinite until the emergency is lifted.
So we're not right up against it?
Yeah, you don't need an extension for most.
I'm not jazzed about the idea of tabling this. I have another comment from Barron. Barron Gemmer, South Wayne. The residences to the south are not multifamily dwelling or apartments per definition. Section 280-36. Section 280-36, which is specifically referenced from the new C3 code language, requires a 10 foot buffer when abutting a residence area not containing apartment use. I think you guys already talked about that. I'm gonna propose an amendment to the resolution. I'm gonna propose that we grant the second waiver that is requested, but that we not grant the waiver for preliminary final, which would bring them back a second time, give staff the opportunity to continue to research. I'm hearing that staff is extremely certain of their position. I know that Steve has been spending a decent fraction of the week going back and forth with Ms. Stern. I know that Baron Gemmer's email came in relatively recently, so that may be new to staff, but this gives them a chance to come back and have an additional conversation with us without completely stalling the process by tabling it.
Jack, these are two different issues that they should be voted on separately.
What are two different issues?
Aren't there two different? They want two different waivers, correct?
Correct, but we have a resolution in front of us that proposes approving both of them. My amendment would be to approve only the second and not the first.
Well, then the your amendment should be that we vote on them separately, not approving one versus the other.
We're not approving either right now. We're amending the resolution, and then we would vote on whether
you want to move over with the.
I don't. Anyway, is there a second for the amendment?
So, Jack, I'm willing to second it, but so you're suggesting we amended to say we will approve the second waiver request. Are you suggesting amending and then going back and amending? I think that's what Sean is trying to say. So you're suggesting we would just approve preliminary right now. Are you amending it to also say that? Or are you just amending to pull that out, and then we'll vote on that separately? I guess I think that's kind of what Sean might have been asking.
Oh, okay, yeah, this would become a preliminary approval as opposed to preliminary final. They would have to come back a second time. I'm not suggesting they should have to add the significant manmade features within 500 feet of the site on the plans the applicant has requested for waiver, et cetera.
Okay, so you're amending the resolution to just say that we would approve preliminary and approve the second waiver?
Correct, and they would have to come back a second time for a final.
Okay, and approving preliminary is not a waiver. Correct?
Well, it's a preliminary approval. They would have to come back a second time to get final approval.
Okay, yeah, I understand that, but their waiver was to go to preliminary final, correct?
Correct, we would be denying that waiver.
Okay. I think that's by the way what Sean was saying.
It's Kevin Kachansky. Unfortunately, my computer locked up when you were asking staff for comments. The one thing I did want to add in, the issue about the the steps in the front nerd setback. I don't have clarity on that issue. It was brought to my attention a couple of minutes before the meeting. Obviously, as a zoning concern or a zoning issue that's potentially a concern, I'd want to take a look at that, and unfortunately, don't have the time to be able to give you an answer on that specific issue tonight.
Jack, and I don't know if you've concluded you have a second on that motion or not, but I would.
I'll second it.
Okay, then. Was it open for comment on the on the amendment?
You don't really do comment on amendments. I was about to call the vote on the amendment.
Jack, Jack.
This point of order, this comment needs to be made. I would not recommend.
It's not really how points of order work.
I would I would not recommend doing a preliminary because you would limit the ability of this board to go through these issues. The preliminary will basically fix the approval. I would say table, and I would not vote, and the board, the rest of the board should recognize, if you do a preliminary approval, there'd be very little possible to address these issues between the preliminary and the final. I recommend a table and review the the whole thing at the next meeting.
Okay, so there's a motion to amend that's on the table. I'm gonna call the vote on that. All in favor.
I just have one question on.
Guys, nope, we're gonna vote on this. I'm sorry. I Rich's thing had nothing to do with the amendment. We have to not have comments on ancillary motions. All in favor, all in favor of the amendment, say aye. Aye. It looks like all against, say nay.
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 Amendment passes four to three. We have an amendment. We have an amended resolution now. Jake, we have not voted on this, so they may still not get their preliminary approval. What is your comment?
Well, it was a question on the amendment, so now that it passed, if this passes, it comes before us for final with no waiver request, correct?
It comes to us for final with one waiver request, which is that they not be required to show on their plan significant manmade features within 500 feet of the site. That's the only waiver that they are requesting. Other than preliminary final, which it seems like they're not gonna get. Okay, so there is an amended resolution. We haven't really had a whole lot of comment on it, but frankly, I think that most of this is going to end up being the same as what we talked about before. Is there any additional commissioner comment on the amended resolution?
Again, my comment is the exact same one. If you if a preliminary plan is approved, there's very little ability to address these issues that have been raised. And Kevin just chimed in and said, not even sure about the steps in the front stoop and within the setback. So I recommend we not, I would not vote for a preliminary approval. I would I would send the the whole thing back and make sure that we address these issues before even providing a preliminary approval. And I've had a lot of experience with this. You give a preliminary approval, we really won't be able to change it.
Yeah, this is a really I mean, this is an area where I'm unhappy with what it looks like. Residents have told me they're unhappy with what they look like, and there's nobody who lives in the area who has in any way complained to me about this, about this development. I'm not really certain why it's drawing as much attention as it is from the two people who don't live there, but it is. For myself, I would not be inclined to table this. I think that the residents who actually live in that area want to see this area improved. I mean, it's a burned down building.
I would agree with you, Jack. The the comments that I've heard from residents, specifically one, who was a Radnor grad, owns properties along there and knows the landscaping business in the area, was specifically around addressing the off street parking and making sure that that was included. And that that there was, you know, a proper design with the neighborhood, is what I've heard from that individual and one other person that owns property across the street and grew up in the area. So they are they're very much for this. It is a blight on the community that's in there right now. And the cleanup that has already started alleviates a lot of the concerns that I have around the environmental aspects of what was there and what is there. And it sounds like that is being cleaned up and taken care of per environmental guidelines as well, and the township is satisfied with it.
I don't think anybody wants to stop redevelopment of the area. And I'm a neighbor, and I go, again, I I'm in the area every week, several times a week. However, what I'm saying is that these are new issues that were raised. Everyone needs to look at these and that we should provide ample time for a thorough review of the issues. And Baron is right, to do a Zoom call on on these complex issues is very difficult, not only for us, but also for the constituents. So I would move to table it, or I would not approve the preliminary. And let's, before we approve a preliminary, or I might even be willing to do a preliminary final once we get these issues resolved. But again, I do not want to approve a preliminary at this point. Because we will not be able to change it effectively if we need to.
Are you making a motion to table, Rich?
The most I haven't made that motion because we're considering the motion to approve a preliminary. The amendment passed, and the amendment is a preliminary and the waiver of the putting of manmade objects within 500 feet. My view is that that we should vote no on that. If it does, if we do vote no on this, I would vote to table. But I want to offer that to the board ahead of time. If Jack wants, so no, I was not making the motion to table, but if if the chair allows, then I would make that motion if he wants to hear that.
Well, I don't think we can table it once we vote no. When we vote no, they're going to appeal the next day. If we want to table it, we gotta table it before we vote one way or the other. So if you want to make the motion, now's the time.
Rich, you're on mute.
All right, I moved the table. I think we got a table so that we can consider all these issues.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion to table. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. Motion fails for lack of majority. Is there any staff comment on the amended resolution? Hearing none, and I see no public comments, I will call for a vote on the amended resolution. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion passes four to three. Okay.
If I may, before we leave this topic, I would ask that the commissioners send, we have some of the emails, and we've responded to them, but there's been responses to responses. So if the commissioners could forward any of those emails to me, we will put them in a reasonable format and order and provide staff's take, which matches our review letters and our thoughts on this, and we will provide that to the board for the next meeting.
Mr. President, I will make sure that those get over to Steve. And his. Excellent. Thank you. Resolution number 20. Oh, and I'm also just going to say to the members of the public, I mean, Steve is obviously asking us to send your emails to him. If you have additional emails, please feel free to copy us, as you have been doing. But if you want to send directly to Steve, it's just gonna make this move faster, and I think that he would be grateful for that. Item 4B, resolution number 2020-137, Ardrossen Nolte Lot Consolidation Plan, Revised Final Subdivision Plan. I will so move, is there a second?
Second.
Steve, is this you to read us in on this, or do we have someone from Ardrossen?
We have Eddie Scott and John Snyder here. This is pretty, pretty basic. It is the consolidation of several Nolte lots into less Nolte lots. There are changes of lines on the paper. I will defer to John Snyder to walk you through, but there's not a lot to this.
Could someone please clarify what NOLTE is for those who may not know?
NOLTE is the North American Land Trust. It's the conservancy agency that has been buying the open areas at Ardrossen to preserve them. This is kind of simple. In October of last year, the board approved the final plan for this lot consolidation. Unfortunately, at that time, we didn't NOLTE didn't own one specific parcel in NRA 25, which would have meant that there would have been a temporary cul-de-sac and that there would have, we couldn't really consolidate it completely like we wanted to. Since then, four other parcels, including NRA 25, have been gifted to NOLTE. And so this is a revised final plan. There are 40 parcels at Ardrossen that NOLTE owns. Right now, there are 14 NRAs, 10 lots, and 16 open space parcels that they own. Four of those 40 are freestanding and will remain freestanding, just be renumbered. The other 36 are being combined into six parcels instead of 36 parcels. It doesn't affect any open space. All of the properties that NOLTE has and are being consolidated here are either restricted or under Act 319, there are no development parcels in here. So that this is simply a simplification of the properties at Ardrossen from 40 into 10 that are all NOLTE parcels. So that's the revision because of those four additional parcels that were gifted to NOLTE subsequent to your last final approval and the recording of the plan, and the fact that by adding them in and revising this final plan, it very much simplifies the consolidation.
Okay, is there any commissioner comment?
You said that NOLTE had been buying these properties. I thought these were all gifted. Has NOLTE been buying any of these properties?
NOLTE acquired NOLTE was gifted money to acquire 10 lots that were then bought by NOLTE and deed restricted against development. So that was a good thing. That was open space, in essence, that was added to the areas that were supposed to be preserved from the original plans of Ardrossen. So that acquisition based upon gifts of money from donors was a a positive to preservation at Ardrossen. All of the other parcels, the 14 NRAs and the open space areas have either been gifted, in the case of the NRAs, or conveyed to NOLTE for preservation under the terms of the Homeowners Association and the township approvals with respect to the open space areas.
So NOLTE did then purchase lots with funds that were donated.
Yes.
Was the funds that were donated, did that, where did those funds come from and where did they go to? Did they go to the same people, or what was the structure of that? I wasn't aware that we had that going on.
Yes, you did, and we talked about this two other times in front of the board in the past three years. This happened in 2017, I believe, where various residents at Ardrossen donated money to NOLTE so that they could acquire 10 lots in Phase 4 to prevent there being more development in that part of the of the property. As I said, that was two and a half, three years ago.
So that those funds that were donated went to the developer?
Those funds that were donated went to NOLTE, and NOLTE used them to buy lots from the developer instead of the developer selling those lots to individuals to build houses on.
That fair market value transaction, or was it alternative valuation methodologies?
No, it was a fair market value transaction.
Is there any other commissioner comment? Is there any staff comment?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So Treasurer Catherine Gertl speaking. I just want to make sure that Delaware County is clear on these parcels and all property lines are clearly designated. Because there seems to be a great deal of confusion at Delaware County as to the deeds and the property lines in Ardrossen.
Yes, we've gone through a lot with the Delaware County Tax Assessors. They have, they've placed assessments on some of our parcels as if they're the main house and the residual property still owned by the trust. We have one two acre parcel that has an assessment on it that's under appeal of, I think, $11 million. We've given plans to the Tax Assessor's Office. We've given this plan to the Tax Assessor's Office. And we will be going through the process of recording consolidation deeds so that each of these 10 properties will have a. so that each of these 10 properties will have a recorded deed for them. And as I said, there are 40 parcels that are going to 10. 12 of those parcels are open spaces that don't have any tax numbers to begin with because this is a uniform plan community and the open space isn't an assessed parcel. The 14 NRAs and the 10 lots will be affected by these consolidation plans, and so those 24 properties will go to something less than 10 because there are a couple of these standalones that are open space instead of either an NRA or a lot. So yes, we understand working with the county, and they already have a copy of this plan.
It's what time period?
I'm sorry, what?
What, when did they receive these plans?
They received, we had to go through 24 reassessment appeals with the county on these properties because of them failing to consider the deed restrictions on the 10 lots and for the NRAs and the Act 319 on the other NRAs. So on November 4th, they received folders on each of those 24 parcels plus the lot consolidation plan and an hour and 40 minutes of discussion and hearing on exactly how this all works. So I think they're now a lot clearer, but it has been more of a problem for us than it actually has been for you. Because we get tax bills for people that have owned lots for four and five years. We get assessments that don't relate. We have one parcel that we have two different tax numbers for and so forth. So yes, we understand the problem with the Delaware County Assessor's Office and are trying to work that as best we can.
Yes, well, it would behoove you and the association to straighten all that out as quickly as possible, and for that impacts not only taxes, but also our stonewater and our other, that fee and.
We understand. We have been trying our best for a long time. I think with the reassessment, they've been able to focus because they've had to deal with all of the individual properties all at one specific time. And with this lot consolidation plan going from 40 parcels to 10 will be a big help in trying to keep things correct.
All right, thank you.
One more thing, Stephen, Bill, what, what's the status of that view shed issue? Recall Newtown, Darby Paley Road, there were complaints that the berm and the view shed was not as was promised. What's the status of that? I haven't heard anything for a couple months on that.
Commissioner, the, I requested an as-built from the builder, which I did receive. There were deficiencies in the berm. They've already addressed the major deficiency, which was at the west end. But to be clear, there was nothing in the developer's agreement or on the plans that stated cars would not see the houses entirely. So the developer is going to bring the berm into compliance, but that will not block the view of the homes on that drive.
What about the size of the trees? Wasn't, wasn't the landscaping supposed to do that?
The trees were reviewed by John Hospacker Arboris some time ago. He's going to go back and review them again. Based on his last review, the trees that were planted, other than some that had to be replaced, met the specifications. So as with most buffers and with most plantings, it's five years, 10 years when those trees are most effective, not when they're the two and a half inch caliber trees that are planted.
Thank you.
Is there any additional staff comment? I see no public comment, so I will call the vote. All in, I need to move this over so I can see all of you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes six to one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item 4C, ordinance number 2020-22, introduction, adoption of the final 2021 comprehensive budget by setting the township real estate tax millage rate and adopting appropriations for 2021. I will so move, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Bill, this is a weird millage rate because it doesn't have a millage rate in the ordinance. Could you tell us why?
Absolutely. So, specific to that issue, as we just talked about in the last item, given the countywide reassessment, at this date, we have not received the final assessment numbers from the county yet. So it is impossible for us to determine exactly what the revenue neutral rate for 2021 will look like. So in consideration of that, Section 2 of the ordinance simply spells out that the total tax millage rate for 2021 will be set at revenue neutral in accordance with the limitation on tax increase after countywide reassessment per the state code. We understand from the county that we will receive those final assessment numbers, hopefully on or about November 30th. So it will be during the advertising period for this ordinance. Per our charter, when we adopt ordinances, we have to get the ball rolling now. The ordinance will be advertised for a public hearing and adoption at the December 14th meeting. So as soon as we get the final assessment numbers from the county, we will be able to calculate what revenue neutral looks like for the millage rate for 2021, and Section 2 of this ordinance will be updated with that millage. We did not want to include what the 2020 millage rate is in consideration of false, or having folks falsely calculating their 21 taxes based on the 2020 millage rate. We understand, based on preliminary assessment numbers, that next year's millage will be far less than what the 2020 millage rate is, simply because of the increase in total assessed value. But we didn't want to set expectations one way or another with either the 2020 rate or trying to estimate what 2021 might look like. So at this point, we've just declared that the 2021 millage rate will be set at revenue neutral once we get the numbers.
So.
Thank you. Oh, go ahead.
Sure, no, I was just gonna, to, to continue by saying that that's consistent with what we've presented, going back to the special meeting we had in October where the administration presented the budget. In consideration of the reassessment and everything going on with the economy, is keeping the real estate tax millage at revenue neutral. Without the reassessment, we would be proposing the same millage rate as prior years. So that is consistent with what we've presented. As we've talked about in the public meetings and then in the individual meetings we've had with some of the commissioners, the 2021 budget is basically keeping Radnor Township's operations at what they are today, accounting for, you know, collectively bargained wage increases and other operating costs to continue to provide the same level of service. Obviously, most of the uncertainty in question is aimed or lies within what the business taxes will do for next year. We, we already know that, you know, the reduction that we saw this year, which was pretty close to what we thought it would be. So the good news is, is that our estimates were close. The bad news is, is that our estimates were close, and we realized the losses that we were anticipating. The, the biggest question going into 2021 now is, you know, what's going to happen with the economy and, you know, the, the countries and our states' reaction to, you know, the COVID situation and how that's going to trickle down and affect businesses here in Radnor. So at this point, you know, adopting the budget as presented would be our recommendation, holding millage rates at revenue neutral, and then, you know, we'll, we'll react as we need to going forward.
Thank you. Are there any commissioner comments?
I was just, so we do have a meeting next Monday night, correct, Bill? Do you anticipate, and I guess that's the 30th, I don't know how quickly, you know, do you anticipate being able to discuss the millage rate and whatnot next Monday, or?
So the meeting next Monday was penciled in? It's not anything we formally added to the calendar, is it?
Oh, okay.
So, um, but to answer your question directly, if, as soon as we get those final assessment numbers, my understanding of the, the calculation to get it revenue neutral is pretty straightforward. We will consult with the solicitor, making sure that the assumptions used are correct. But I think we'll be able to turn that around very quickly.
So between now and adoption, we only, we have no meeting to talk about the budget? I'm looking at, we've reserved, I guess, the 30th. I see the 7th is in green here on this budget calendar. But was that if needed as well? So we have no meetings between now and the 14th?
None that are scheduled, none that are scheduled, but I'm, you know, if the board wants to, I'm always happy to talk about the budget.
Yeah, I think that it's going to be tough for us to, I mean, on the one hand, this is purely mechanical. We don't have a ton of options here. But I do think that we can't just go from introducing, I promise we'll get back to you, and then adopting, here's the number.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we need to have.
Very good.
A meeting.
And then, going back to your original point of whether or not, I'm looking for my calendar, which was right in front of me and has disappeared. So that, I'm not sure Monday, the 30th is, is ironclad because the county has been non-committal. That's just kind of the date they put out there. A month ago, they were telling us mid-November, so perhaps.
7th.
December 7th would be, would make more sense.
Will that be a challenge? Because isn't that, is that Planning Commission that night? Steve Norsini? I, I think that might be planning too. That might be a night of planning.
Planning Commission is December 7th. You are correct, Commissioner. But, I mean, Steve is always helpful to have, frankly, but I don't know that we need him as much on a budget night.
I just don't know if we can do, are we going to do Zoom meeting? Can we do two Zoom meetings at one time? Did we have a trouble with that before?
Yes, we did.
We did.
I have an account. We can, we can use my account.
Well, I mean, between now and December 7th, we'll be able to figure out how to overcome that issue. I don't, I don't foresee that slowing us down. And if need be, well, that, that's a problem we can, we can overcome before December 7th.
Or I would suggest maybe tentatively scheduling the 30th, because we should have the figures by the 30th, Bill. In other words, everyone got their notice in the mail of their final from their hearing.
I have not gotten my notice of final yet.
They're dated November 18th. Hopefully you will get them soon. They should have the numbers by the 30th. Won't give you a lot of time.
Yeah, I mean, but to your point, Kathy, we can tentatively schedule it for that night, I guess, and then pivot if we don't have it yet.
Just to give you more flexibility, that's all.
I have a couple things. Steve, is this, for the sewers, the 785 per thousand gallons, does that remain the same from last year? Has that changed?
Yeah, that's the next ordinance on the agenda, and yes, that, that's keeping the rate the same from 20 to 21.
Okay. With regard to your resolution, just calling for revenue neutral, why don't, why don't we, why don't we, again, just defer this resolution until we have the number? Why don't we defer this until we have the number, either the 30th or the 7th? And I recognize it'll be late or not in keeping with our schedule, but these are, it's a significant issue, and it looks like we're going to have to have a meeting anyway. Why don't we table this until we have the numbers?
Well, I'll, I'll lean on Colby here a little bit. My understanding of the charter and the, the requirements to adopt an ordinance is an introduction, then a 10-day advertising period, followed by, you know, a scheduling for a public hearing and adoption, looking at the calendar. You know, this meeting is typically the last meeting we have to give us enough time to shoot for that first meeting in December. So if, if need be, Colby, I, if, if we have a special meeting on the 30th and we have the numbers that night, that, does that give us enough time then to advertise and adopt on the 14th, or are we pushing?
That does. I think you're right in your first assessment that we have to do it now.
Well, I'm suggesting that we would be late with this.
I'm not interested in creating a scenario where everyone in the township is able to challenge their property tax because we failed to adopt on time. I mean, it would make the ordinance procedurally invalid.
Well, I think it's procedurally invalid by saying it's, here's the millage rate, the millage rate is revenue neutral. It's not, it's not a millage rate.
Yeah, I hear you. I, I gotta hope that a judge understands that we're stuck in the position that we are. We gotta do something. I'd rather put it, I'd rather put it out there that we're introducing it in a timely manner, and we are giving you the, all the data that we have as to what the number will be. But I agree with you, I've got to agree with you, it would be better to have an actual number. That's what millage rates usually are, numbers.
And because of that, I would just suggest that if we're a week or two late, that, you know, we, that that would be acceptable.
If we, if we introduce tonight, or at least, I mean, it's out there tonight, what the intentions are, whether the board wants to act on it formally tonight is up to you. But we would reintroduce this a week from tonight at a special meeting on the 30th. Fingers crossed that we have the numbers in time to, to make that introduction more meaningful. Then we could advertise and adopt still on December 14th. Looking at the calendars, does that seem feasible, Colby?
It does.
But that could be Plan A. If we don't have the numbers by the 30th in time to have a meaningful discussion that night, then we'll have to push to the 7th, which means the budget gets adopted on the 21st.
Okay. Could we then ratify the adoption thereafter? Sort of belt and suspenders. My concern is if we don't do it in the proper timing and the proper order, then it's procedurally invalid. Rich's concern is if you don't put the number in, then it's procedurally invalid. We could introduce today, reintroduce on the 30th if we get the numbers, adopt thereafter, and then ratify afterwards, and both of our concerns are as resolved as they will be, I guess.
Oh, when will we be passing the budget, though? The budget needs to be passed before the 11th.
Right.
But I, I think Commissioner Booker's point is, is, you know, if that has to be late, then so be it. And that, that, that typically happens with the, the way the meetings line up in December. Otherwise, we'd have to adopt the budget pretty much in November. So we've always, we're always cutting it close with the first meeting in December, just depending on the way the calendar falls.
Well, wait a second, Colby. Did you say it has to be passed before December 11th?
Yes.
Our next meeting is the 14th, isn't that right?
Yes.
It is.
So we need to have a special meeting on the 7th, then?
I would think we would need to have a special meeting before the 11th.
Yeah, I, Colby, what you're referring to is the, the, the charter section about the budget that says no more, adopted, no later.
Later than 20 days before the end of the year, which would be December 11th.
Yes. So we, we did talk to John Rice when we put the calendar together, and he was okay with the 14th, just given the way that the calendar falls with the meeting schedule.
I talked to John, and I think we talked to Bob the other day, and we said differently. So unless you have a discussion with John in the middle of him talking with me, I, I don't think so.
No. Sorry, Colby, I did speak with John.
No, uh, sorry, Colby. I did speak with John. On Friday. And did explain the, the lining up of the meeting schedule with the budget adoption date. And he was okay with the 14th and also recognizing that it has occurred in prior years, just with the way the meeting schedule falls.
Yeah, and it's complicated this year by this whole reassessment. Holdup. Normally, normally tonight, we're looking at real millage numbers and it's not an issue.
Yeah, I have the same concern that Colby does. This is a year that a lot of people are gonna be looking at strategic ways to avoid paying property taxes. And I don't love the idea of deviating from our charter and creating low hanging fruit. We're talking about a meeting on the 30th or the 7th anyway. Let's plan to meet on the 7th. Let's, assuming we have the votes, let's introduce the ordinance tonight. Let's on the 7th include both introduction of a amended ordinance that has the correct millage. An adoption of the same ordinance that has the correct millage. And on the 14th, we can ratify that adoption, if that makes sense.
That makes sense to me.
But that would still give people time to understand what the millage is. Look, take a look at the budget, all of that, and give them opportunity to comment. If we don't adopt it until the 14th, or ratify it until the 14th. Yes, I'm, I guess I'm. A little, uh, fuzzy on the semantics between adoption and ratification.
So when I say ratification, basically what I mean is we've already adopted it in case, you know, like we need to meet that deadline, but then we more or less re-adopt it. So that we have at least two opportunities that, um. Everyone has seen the correct number and we also get in something that we're calling an adoption before the end of our required period. I mean, this is pretty cludgy, to be honest, but this is the situation the county has created for us. Okay, is there any additional commissioner comment on this? We've been talking about procedure a lot. I haven't heard much about substance. Is there any additional commissioner comment? Is there any staff comment? I see no public comment. So I will call the vote. All in favor of ordinance number 2020-22 say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes six to one. Moving on to item 4D, ordinance number 2020-23, introduction, adoption of the 2020 sanitary and storm, sanitary sewer and stormwater fees. I will so move. Is there a second?
Second.
What do you have to tell us about this?
Absolutely, sure. Uh, so, uh, in the title, we identify both sanitary and stormwater fees. Um, the ordinance itself just speaks to the sanitary sewer fee. The, the mix up there was, um. We're keep, we're, we're proposing that both fees stay at what they have been in 2020. The ordinance, as Commissioner Booker asked about a moment ago, uh, does spell out the same, uh, rate. The, um, $7.85 per 1,000 gallons of water used as certified, uh, by Aqua for the 2020 usage. So that. These, if adopted, the sanitary sewer fee will be the same in 21 as it was in 20. Um, and then the same with the stormwater fee. It's not spelled out in the ordinance, but it is in the fee schedule, which is the next ordinance. That it, it would remain at $29 per unit. And that $29 per unit rate has been in effect since the, uh, the stormwater fees, um, was it, was initiated back in 2014, I believe.
Is there any commissioner comment?
No, except we will change that to 2021, right? Adoption of the 2021 on the agenda.
Yes.
That would be good.
Okay.
Is there any staff comment? I see no public comments, so I'll call the vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 4E, ordinance number 2020-24, introduction, adoption of the consolidated fee schedule for the township effective January 1, 2021. I will so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Bill, uh, tell us about this.
Yep, I'll tee it up. This is, um, so on an annual basis, uh, the consolidated fee schedule is adopted by ordinance. Usually in conjunction or at the same time as the budget's adopted. And then periodically, if there are amendments to the fee schedule, that is done by resolution, although it's, it's been a few years since we've amended mid-year, any of the fees. For the, the 2021 fee schedule, uh, I just, it's part of the packet. It's included with, um. You know, it's included with the board package, so it's, it's public. I'm not sure if the commissioners have had an opportunity to go through it, probably in as much detail as you'd like. So for, you know, tonight is just the introduction. It would not be adopted until the 14th. I would ask if Mr. Tate can maybe step through any of the changes. And we already talked, the, the major one with the stormwater fee staying the same. Um, but if, Bob, if you could highlight any of the, the high level changes. I'd appreciate it.
Sure. Uh, thank you. Uh, the only change for 2021 is in the police section. It is page 21 of the report and it has to do with fines for, uh, false alarms. Just a minor change clarifying what the fine is for a second false alarm and then a third for, false alarm and thereafter. Basically simplifying the fee structure slightly as compared to how it was worded in prior years.
Is there any additional commissioner comment? Is there any staff comment?
Now, just, sorry Commissioner, just real quick, in, in terms of the way that the fee schedule is laid out, we do provide a comparison. For each of the line items throughout the whole fee schedule, so you can quickly go through and see, uh, and verify, uh, Mr. Tate. In summary.
Any additional staff comment? I see no public comments, so I will call the vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Item 4F, ordinance number 2020-21, adoption, approving a cable franchise agreement for a 10-year term between Radnor Township and Comcast of Southeastern Pennsylvania LLC. Um, who do we have online? Well, first I will so move. Is there a second? Seconds are noted. Um, who do we have online who can tell us about this?
Well, I'll, uh, I'll help tee it up. I'm not sure, Colby, if, uh, Mr. Rice. Gave you his, any speaking notes, but this, this ordinance was, when it was introduced at the last meeting, John had gone through and identified or summarized. The executive summary provided to the board by, um, Cohen Law. Uh, that outlined the various changes, uh, that are, or significant items that are included in this franchise renewal. Um, and then we had the discussion at the last meeting before it was introduced. So tonight would be, would be the adoption.
I did not go in, uh, with it further with, with John. Uh, my understanding is that, uh, they went through it. Cohen did a good job, um, in, uh, negotiating it, um, and got a lot of areas. Uh, I mean, I can turn to any of the summary if anybody has any questions. Uh, and hopefully I can answer those.
Well, yeah, and then just significantly, we understand that the franchise rate is gonna remain the same at the 5%. That's what it's been. That's, I think, the maximum allowed by federal law. The, some of the definitions on what is considered gross receipts was expanded with this franchise renewal, uh, given that, um, Comcast has more offerings. Uh, than they did when this was adopted, however many years ago. Um, and then at the same time that we had some discussion last meeting about the PEG. Channels, um, specifically how the, that will be funded. In the past, it was based on a, a, a set revenue amount. Now it'll be one and three quarter, 1.75% of gross receipts. Additionally, in the past Comcast paid for the rent for mainline TV directly. That is shifting over, so now those funds will flow through the township. I think at this point. It's not anticipated from the township that we would make any changes in how that money flows. Uh, it's just a different cut, way of calculating, uh, a similar amount that would go to mainline TV. Uh, who serves as the township's, uh, hired, uh, public access administrator. Um, and then Radnor Township is providing the, the government portion of the PEG, the G portion. And then the school district is providing the educational portion. So, um, so a little bit cha, a little bit different way in calculating the money, but in the, in the end is. As Mr. Cohen summarized, uh, it is consistent in terms of dollar amount. And then the, the, the one decision that we'll have to make if adopted tonight is, um. The new franchise does allow for one HD channel out of, um, the three options, either the, the public access, the government, or the, um, the school district or. Educational portion. Um, so that's something that we'll want to decide on and let Comcast know. And then, uh, other little nuances again that, um, that John summarized and that Dan had provided the board, um, back at the end of October.
I, I'd like to move, move the table. I have a, uh, I've heard from, uh, Jack Brooks and last meeting, I, I said that I would want to hear from the, uh, board. Of RS21 on this and as I suspected, they, they disagree that this is the same and that the amounts are the same. And I think, uh, the rest of the board has that as well. Um, so I've moved the table this until we could have, um. Sign off from Jack Brooks and the Radnor Studio 21 board.
Is there a second? Motion's table fails for lack of a second. Is there any commissioner comment?
I think my, uh, my only comment is gonna be that I think, you know, once, you know, if this passes, we do need to engage with the communications, um, committee. You know, we do have some decisions to make around. You know, what HD channel and whatnot. And I think also to reassure them, you know, I, I, Rich, we, I think we all got the same email from, uh, Mr. Brooks. About that. Um, the other thing that I think we need to talk to Radnor Studio 21 is the thing that he did make very clear in his, uh, email is that. Radnor Studio 21 is servicing other municipalities as well. So I think we need to talk with them and the communications council. Maybe this is where they can. Do some work in, uh, securing some additional funding from those other municipalities that they serve. So, you know, I hear their concerns, but I think that that, um, is something that they need to address.
So what you're saying is that they need to charge the other municipalities?
And that's. If, if they're serving them, then they, they need to work on some agreements with those municipalities as well. And I don't want, I don't want that to derail our whole conversation around just this agreement. But I, I do want to make sure that we do note that, um, you know, we do need to now engage with the communications council on how we move forward.
Well, the, the big issue here, Bill touched upon it, is the rent. You know, again, the, the rent for the. RS21 had been paid through these fees directly charged through. Um, now if we put it onto the township budget. It's going to be a change and I, it could be significant. Again, I, this has been out for five, six years. It's been, since I've been on the board of commissioners. I, I don't see what, we don't need to adopt it. I would wait until, but let's talk to Jack and those folks and make sure that they're comfortable. Um, especially in light of the long, lengthy email we all received today. And, um, I, I agree with him that the. The operational component is a major change. And I also agree with you Lisa, that, you know, that the people outside the township, they need to, um, to cover their end of it if they're not. Through with fees. So, um. But we've waited this long. I'd wait for Jack and the sign off from them before we, we move forward.
Is there any additional commissioner comment? Is there any staff comment? I see no public comments, so I will call the vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay.
Aye.
Motion passes six to one. Moving on to item 4G, motion to repeal Article 1, Chapter 260, amusement tax from the Radnor Township Code. Um, this is related obviously to H, which is ordinance number 2020-18, introduction, amending and restating Article 1, Chapter 260 of the Radnor Township Code relating to the amusement tax. What I'm gonna ask that we do here, subject to the board's pleasure, is have Jenny Brown, who is our tax litter, who's tax solicitor, sorry Jenny. Uh, read us in on this if we get a motion in a second. We'll take the motion to repeal first in terms of votes. Uh, if it does not pass, then we would take the ordinance second. If the motion to repeal does pass, then since obviously you would need an ordinance to repeal, I guess we would treat this as a motion. Directing staff to prepare an ordinance which we would introduce at the next meeting. If that works for everybody else. I will so move for item G, motion to repeal Article 1, Chapter 260, amusement tax from the Radnor Township Code. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, Jenny, what are we talking about?
Okay, thank you. Nice to see everyone. Um, I'd like to provide some context for, uh, how we got where we are with this agenda item tonight, these two agenda items, and then briefly explain. The proposed amendments. Last year, when it became evident that tax revenue was falling short of expectations and projections, the tax team. Took a, a look to see if the township could better enforce the taxes that were already on the books. As opposed to adopting new taxes or increasing tax rates. Uh, the team concluded that improvements could be made in two main areas. The first being the enforcement program that is in place already for the business privilege and mercantile taxes. As part of the effort to improve that, um, enforcement program back in, at February, I think. The board authorized the hiring of an experienced tax administrator. For, for a position that would be dedicated to business tax enforcement. It's a position that. Previously had had a dedicated, um, full-time person 10 years ago or so, and then had not had a full-time. Person dedicated just to that, um, in the position. So that, that was, um, the, the first area of improvement to improve revenue. And then the second way we thought improvements could be made, um, to tax revenue was with respect to the amusement tax. The team proposed that the township start a compliance and enforcement program. Substantially similar to what it has for the business privilege and mercantile taxes for the amusement tax. The amusement tax is not something new. It was adopted in, originally in 1958. In a nutshell, an amusement tax is, is a tax imposed on people, whether they live in the township or not. Who attend or participate in amusements in the township. Uh, there are various restrictions on amusement taxes in state law. But in general, the amusement tax is 10% of the established price to participate in or attend the amusement. And the tax is required to be collected by the producer of the, of the amusement and remitted to the township. If the producer fails to collect the tax, then the producer becomes liable for the payment. When setting up any new, um, tax enforcement program, the first step is to review the tax legislation. Uh, itself to see whether there are areas where the language can be improved, uh, which will facilitate administration, uh, compliance and enforcement. And we found a number of those areas. And so I think it was last March, uh, staff introduced proposed amendments to the amusement tax. Uh, some of the amendments were simply to improve language, uh, but a main part of the amendments was to clarify how the tax applies with respect to patrons. Who attend certain events produced by charitable organizations. The code had a provision titled exemptions. But the language of the code actually said that, um, the tax did apply to amusements produced by charitable organizations. And so. And so um, in order to clarify that, one of the proposed amendments was to delete the section titled exemptions. However, it was not just the confusing language that caused us to propose removing the exemption section. Um, the recommendation was also made because it, it seems apparent that such an exemption is, is not constitutional because it violates the requirement in the Pennsylvania constitution that taxes be applied uniformly to similarly situated taxpayers, in this case patrons of amusements. Um, there, there does not appear to be a legal reason to tax differently. As an example, people who play a round of golf at a community-owned golf course, um from people who play a round of golf at a, at a private golf club. So because of the likely unconstitutional nature of the exemption, we recommended deleting the exemption as opposed to just clarifying the language. Um, for various reasons, perhaps exacerbated by the pandemic, I'm not entirely sure. The amusement tax was tabled last spring. Um, and since then, we received quite a bit of, of feedback. Um, we also dug up the original amusement tax ordinance, which showed that the word "not" was in the original tax ordinance, but somehow um deleted uh from the exemption provision when the tax was codified forty-five years ago. Um, we also received a lot of concern about how the tax would apply to amusements like um a school play or high school, or a high school football game. And it was suggested that amusements that have no commercial value be deemed to have an established ticket price of zero. And so the version that, that would be introduced um this evening has that language in it. I note that the language does not exempt patrons of those amusements. Um, it just establishes a ticket price of zero for tickets to events with no obvious commercial value. Um, I, one other thing I should, I should also note is that even if no amendments uh are made to the amusement tax, uh, we can embark on the improved enforcement and, and compliance program. It would just be with the understanding that uh the current exemption provision is not constitutional and that if, if that gets challenged in court, a court will likely find the exemption unconstitutional and sever it from the rest of the ordinance, uh thereby forcing the township's hand with respect to getting rid of the exemption provision um and making the tax uniform on patrons of amusements regardless of who's producing them. So that's, that's the context um of it and then the basics of, of the version that um had been introduced most recently, the idea was um as opposed to looking at increasing real estate taxes, we um or, or implementing new kinds of taxes, um we, we would look at trying to better enforce, get better compliance on our existing taxes.
Commissioner, comment?
Well, we'll go through this again, but we have the first vote on repeal, right? And then I'd like to uh discuss a little bit more detail if that, if that doesn't pass the um deemed zero value.
Okay.
So I guess I can start, you know, I put this on here uh to repeal this um based on my concern with regards to the uh proposed amendments to it, um which if this does not pass, we will consider next. Um, you know, I think we heard quite cleanly from many of our um, you know, from our, we heard from our business community, certainly the Chamber of Commerce. We've heard from several, we heard from uh several nonprofits. We also heard from, I think, some restaurateurs. Um, you know, this is definitely, you know, as Jenny states, has been a tax that has been on the books that has not been enforced. Um, you know, I think last, I think in twenty twenty, we, Bill was kind enough to provide me with some information. We got about six thousand dollars. I think the max over the last four years has been a, a little bit north of fifteen thousand dollars. Um, and you know, I am very concerned about the um, the impact that this will have on our community nonprofits who use event fundraising as a primary source of income. Um, if you go to the township website, we have a, a page of community groups. On that page alone, there are forty-eight uh nonprofits listed there. Um, who I am sure in one way or the other um could be impacted by this, by this tax. Um, also on our website, there are at least fifteen schools um from preschool to higher ed. Uh, it doesn't even include, uh, well, it does include Radnor Township School District. It doesn't include any of the other religious schools or anything like that, any of the private schools that are also exempt. And I know that we have many in, in the township. So you know, while we are, I know it is, it is attractive to consider the amount of funds that could potentially be out there um around, you know, the enforcement of this, of this tax. I think that it is uh the negative to so many groups and businesses and organizations within the township. Um, is, you know, is something that we should be concerned about. And I agree with those who say that in this time, um, we should be concerned about enforcing that um with so many uh, you know, businesses are hurting, when so many businesses are leaving our, our, our township. Um, when our restaurants are desperate for people to come in and have events, um, I don't think that we should make it harder. And I don't think that um we should be penalizing people for their, for their participation in that um or forcing them to go somewhere else because ultimately that will, that does hurt us. Um, so my desire would be that we repeal this. Um, Jenny did talk about how we um are in the process of hiring someone who is going to be looking, you know, to enforce our Act five eleven taxes. Um, I think we work on those. I think we look and see where we can um, you know, do better enforcement there. And then if we feel like, you know, there's something else, maybe we bring this back at a later date and talk about it. Um, but right now, I just think that it is not, um, I just don't think i- it's a good time to do this. Uh, quite frankly, I don't think anytime it'd be good to do something that is going to impact our nonprofits and our schools. Um, I'm concerned even with the changes to the, you know, if this doesn't pass, I'm concerned with the changes in the next um, you know, that we have up for consideration next. Um, so that's where I stand with this. And that's why I put this on.
So I'm mostly the proponent of the uh amendments, so I guess I'll speak up for them and by necessity against the motions of repeal. The, this is not a good year to repeal taxes. We should not be chopping taxes that we have on our books this year, spending down our reserve, and then next year putting ourselves in a position where we may very well have to raise taxes on residents.
Well, you know, you know.
Um. I understand the concern that vulnerable nonprofits should not be the subject of what's been referred to as a confiscatory tax. There are a number of provisions that have been put in place in the amendments that would avoid precisely that. The first is it's not a ten percent charge on admission fees. Instead, it's a ten percent charge on the amusement portion of admissions fees. I cannot think of many, but I can't think of any events which are intended to go for the benefit, the fundraising benefit of a nonprofit institution that are not decreased by the cost of food, the venue, all of that, which means that you'd be paying ten percent on a small, far smaller dollar figure. Moreover, because this, uh, the amendments make the tax on the commercial value of the amusement, any uh, any nonprofit, any, any organization at all has the option to charge admission and not pay a tax so long as they do not choose to bring in a entertainer or an amusement that has commercial value, which puts nonprofits as well as for-profit businesses in the driver's seat as to whether they will or will not pay tax. Now, it does to some extent mean that if you want to bring on board the very most top-notch entertainment, you will end up paying tax. If you want to bring in a world-famous comedian, if you want to bring in a world-famous musician, you will end up paying tax if those people are at your event. But, and meaning no offense to Jenny, but if you have her come and be the keynote speaker at your event, I'm betting that you probably will not end up paying any tax. The same goes for me. The same goes for most of us on the board. So there is no reason that nonprofits would end up paying this unless they chose to. They would always have the option not to. With respect to the concerns that were raised by some of the specific residents who wrote in, uh, I would invite their conversation. I, I don't really see the concerns that they do. Mr. Dejeunay, again, I, I apologize for butchering your last name, specifically said that he would move the events that the chamber was having out of Radnor. I don't know what events the chamber is having that have entertainments with commercial value. Maybe they've got a lot. I just, the chambers that I belong to don't have those. They have rubber chicken and meet and greets and the occasional speech by somebody who does not have any commercial value. So anyway, it's a fairly long-winded way of saying, I think that the impact on um, I think the impact on nonprofits in particular would be slight. I think that the impact on for-profits would be slight. I think that the potential revenue that we could generate, Bill, you tell me, what, what is anticipated for uh revenue that we would take in if we pass the ordinance?
Yeah, um, Bob, I'll let you answer that. I know you talked to the auditor earlier. Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, Mr. President, early on in the process, uh, we did confer with um our Act five eleven tax auditor. And uh, so he independently did some analysis and um some number crunching based on his knowledge and his experience with the township and uh looking at um different venues and events. And his rough numbers at the time, and this was back in February or March, was that this tax, when, when properly restated and, and codified, could produce, and of course enforced, enforced, would, could produce in the range of three hundred to four hundred thousand dollars a year, a year. Um, and just to clarify, earlier I heard comments about, you know, the tax imposed and on the businesses. This, it truly is, it's on the person attending, on the participant. Um, just in case anyone was, there was maybe some lack of clarity in the past, but it, it's a pass-through just like a sales tax. Uh, so it may not necessarily directly burden uh the businesses as some may perceive. Uh, but three hundred to four hundred thousand were rough estimates based on his analysis at that time.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just don't believe that if you ask me to pay a hundred and three dollars to go to an event instead of a hundred flat, that I would turn it down. I don't see the likelihood that that will end up being a problem, but I've been wrong in the past. I might be wrong here. For three hundred to four hundred thousand dollars, I feel like we need to take the risk, particularly when we are doing as much as we can to ameliorate the effect that this would have on nonprofits. Anyway, I've been talking for a while, so I'm gonna give up the floor.
Um, can I?
Hey, Damien.
Can I ask a naive question? And that is, this tax has been on the books since nineteen fifty-eight. Um, it, it appears with little effect. Um, I, I think, but we all acknowledged in previous meetings that enforcement uh is, is largely to blame for that. Um, what is going to change? And, and how are we going to enforce this? Um, how are we going to police this? How are we actually going to collect taxes levied uh and get to that three hundred to four hundred thousand per year number? I, I'm, I missed it. That, it doesn't make sense to me.
Commissioner, I'll be happy to address that. Um, number one, the, the lack of enforcement was in part a result of not having the substance of the ordinance um correctly stated, correctly worded. Uh, the defects in the ordinance led to the lack of the enforcement. Uh, so that, it, it just kind of sat idle, if you will. Um, with the correction, the corrections that are proposed and the restatement of the ordinance, the, um, it will give clarity and um clear lines of how the tax would be applied if it were, if it passed. The, in the ordinance, also having an adoption period of July one of twenty twenty-one, is going to provide administration a significant amount of time to do a rollout and, and education and meeting with business groups and other groups who would be affected and explain how it applies, provide uh forms for how they can tabulate or collect and, and aggregate these pass-through taxes, if you will. So we're, we're providing ample time for education um with an ordinance that would have as, as we see, better clarity and um better wording and um hopefully better, much better compliance.
And is this a self-reporting mechanism, much like our business privilege tax?
Well, it absolutely is. So the enforcement, um, there is a, there is an enforcement component to it at that.
Duty, our responsibility.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, so there, it is a self-reporting. So uh, even with a dedicated, full-time Act five eleven professional who would be overseeing all of the business taxes, business privilege, mercantile, and amusement, it, it does require a certain amount of follow-up oversight uh as, and more importantly, an interaction and a relationship with the business community so that uh it's not a, we minimize any contentious nature of enforcing the tax as best we can.
Okay.
Broke, um, a little more positive enforcement.
Okay. And, and just one final question to make sure that I have the numbers right that we're talking about. We're talking that right now, currently, uh, we're in the five to eight thousand dollar per range, maybe as much as fifteen, but certainly no more than twenty or twenty-five thousand dollars a year uh in terms of revenue. And the hope directive, the goal is that we will be potentially, the, the impact could be three to four hundred thousand. Is that correct?
That's the estimate prepared by the, by our auditor.
Okay.
In the, in the past, over the past ten years, twenty-ten through twenty-nineteen, we were collecting on average about thirty-one thousand, just over thirty-one thousand. Um, the highest point was uh just over forty-six thousand. Our low point was uh twelve thousand. Um, and twenty-twenty will, will be a new low point. I don't think.
Okay. Understood. So my, my final statement, and I'll stop, is that um in, in my professional life, I've worked for accountant CPAs um for close to twenty-five or thirty years. Uh, I am not a CPA. Um, but I know enough about it now. Um, something's not adding up in those numbers. This, this seems uh like a wide, wide chasm to me. Um, and, and I think that it is wishful thinking at best uh in terms of those numbers. So I'll, I'll just leave it at that. I'm, uh, I'm, uh, something's just not adding up.
Can I uh say something?
Please.
Damien, great. I, I'll disagree. I, I have a little statement I want, want to read. So this is not about elementary school plays. And Radnor Elementary School puts on a thirty thousand dollar production every year. There's no commercial value in, in this play uh unless your kid's in it. Um, they would be exempt. So this is deliberately about institutions that deliberately shirk their responsibility. Um, or should I say uh one institution? And this is what happens when, you know, when, when it goes on and on for years and years and years of, of basically neglecting your responsibilities. Um, floor seats at Villanova, one can only get with a twenty-five thousand or fifty thousand dollar donation. So I think that's a, a big bulk of it there. Um, this is about a school who. This is about a school who brands their logo for, on a Miller Lite kiosk at the giant food store. So to me, this is really about one institution that hasn't paid, they're not gonna pay. This is what happens. We are all hurting here. All hurting. The township is no different than every other institution and every other nonprofit that's out there. So I am all for it. I think that it's important that we should at least see where this goes and see what we can get. And I think it's about time that, that we start looking outside the box when it comes to nonprofits that are really for-profits and really are professional sports teams. The players are gonna be able to sign licensing agreements as professional athletes. There is a professional team in this township. A professional team in this township. I will say that again. And they are selling tickets. And this directly applies to them. And we're at, we're at a loss of money partly because of them. And I think it's about time that we collect.
I would just say, I'm, I'm for the repeal of the tax and taxes, all taxes in general are a drag on the economy, deter business and, and human ingenuity and human endeavor. In this particular case, it's not a significant issue. And I would, I would agree to repeal it. I don't believe that we're going to be able to make the distinction that no commercial value, and certainly I don't believe that the taxpayers will be able to make that readily. And even if they don't, there's also compliance issues. So everybody will have a compliance review. It'll be a significant burden on all of the other businesses just, just for the compliance and the review. So we're better off getting rid of it, making it clean. We don't rely on it. Now's the time to get rid of it. And coming out of the lockdown that have been imposed by an overzealous governor and others, this is, this is the wrong time to, to start, to start enforcing this aggressively.
The proposed amendments don't go into effect immediately, isn't that correct? If they were passed, they wouldn't begin until when?
We have an implementation date of July 1, 2021. Commissioner?
Okay, well, depending on whether we get to it, we might want to amend that to push it a little bit later, given where we are in the coronavirus. Okay, is there any additional commissioner comment? Is there any additional staff comment? We do have more public comments. Nick Niglia writes, "I represent Notre Dame Academy, NDA, in regards to the proposed amusement tax. Please consider that below is comment by NDA during the discussion of the agenda items. NDA had two issues regarding the tax, tax on sporting events, band concerts, plays, et cetera. Please confirm that the tax on these events have been removed as subject to the tax provided they are performed by the high school students. Two, fundraising events. Most fundraising events involve entertainment such as a performance by a band. It appears that the price of admission would be subject to a 10% amusement tax, less the cost of items such as meals. This would be a substantial tax on the proceeds raised by the charity. Furthermore, deducting the cost of meals would be an accounting nightmare as the charity attempts to differentiate between the types of meals served at the event. As a result, Notre Dame Academy respectfully requests a repeal of any amusement tax. Thank you for your time and consideration, Nick Niglia." Joseph T. Doyle Jr. writes, "My name is Joseph Doyle, a Radnor Township resident. Since 2006, I have served on the Board of Archbishop Carroll High School as Finance Committee Chairman. Carroll has recently celebrated 50 years as a vital member of the Radnor Township community. Two-thirds of Carroll's students receive tuition assistance. The vast majority of adult fundraising is dedicated to helping finance this assistance. Tax revenues derived from adult fundraising activities would directly diminish this assistance. Student activities that charge admission fees only partly cover the cost of those activities. Tax revenues derived from those activities would increase the burden on school resources. As I understand it, the proposal has recently amended, has been recently amended with the intent of not taxing activities involving minors. Not being a lawyer, I am not clear what the legal definition of a minor is. Presuming it is at age 18, does this impose a burden of tracking students who have an 18th birthday during the school year? And in general, I'm concerned about the compliance burden this places on the school's business office. As Carroll is struggling with the COVID-19 response, like all educational institutions, this added burden in addition to the cash flow drain makes the timing of tax most unwelcome. I therefore speak against this proposal. Regards." Nick Niglia writes again, "As below, I represent Notre Dame Academy. I do not believe that the ordinance is written so that the funds raised at fundraising events where there is entertainment are not subject to the 10% tax. For instance, for example, if a school or foundation has an event that raises $50,000, it will be subject to a $5,000 tax. Nick Niglia." That is all the public comment that we have. I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Wait, could you restate the, restate the emotion again you're doing?
So this is the motion to repeal Article 1, Chapter 260, the amusement tax, which if successful, will result in directing staff to prepare an ordinance for the next meeting or whenever it can be advertised, which, when adopted, would result in the repeal of the amusement tax. So we'll call the vote again. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Nay. Looks like five to two. We will be repealing the amusement tax. Resolution number 2020-141, awarding the construction contract, oh, thank you, Jenny, I appreciate your time. Awarding the construction contract for the Radnor Tap Trail to RoadCon Incorporated in the amount of $1,862,370.85 and authorizing the payment to the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for incurred administrative costs of $10,000 to be paid from bond proceeds. I will so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Steve Norzini, tell us about this.
Thank you, Commissioner. So this project's been before the commissioners several, many times over the past few years. You may recall that we did get $2.25, $2.225 million in grants for this project. And just so everybody is aware, there was a portion that had a crosswalk at Lenore and Conestoga, and the trail went through the West Wayne Preserve. You may recall that has been removed from these plans and a separate project using West Wayne Avenue to Friends of the Radnor Trail Park has taken that place. So I want to make sure everybody's aware of that. We received our easements from the Radnor Township School District as well as from the Cornerstone Homeowners Association. The project was bid by PennBid, by PennDOT, I'm sorry. The $1.8 million cost is actually below what we thought it was gonna come in at. And there is a table in the memo, and I'm just gonna step through that. There's the $1,862,370.85 construction award. PennDOT does not use this, but we always put in a contingency for any possible change orders. And I'd just like to remind everybody that a contingency is just that. It does not get spent unless a change order comes forth. And if they're big enough change orders, they will be before the Board of Commissioners. But I would, if the board so, if it so pleases the board to award this contract, I would like to book that amount as part of the total project cost. There is a $10,000 fee to PennDOT. This is their project. This has gone through their system. And we also show here, because it was decided this, the board, that this would come out of the bond, the GOB, the estimated cost for the West Wayne Avenue alternative, alternative connection, the one I just mentioned, of $250,000. Previously, the Board of Commissioners awarded the Inspection Services Contract to McManan Association, McMahon and Associates for this project. And also the Township's Construction Administrative Contract to Simone Collins. So that, a construction administration contract covers the RFIs, Request for Information, Material Submittals, and other issues that will come about on the trail. There's no doubt about it. So the primary source of funding was $1 million from PennDOT. We got from the Department of Conservation and National Resources for $500,000. PA, the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for $225,000, and Delaware County, an amount of $500,000. So I don't know if you remember, we were talking about costs in the amount of $700,000 or $800,000 to the township for this project. But as it stands, we're well below $400,000. And that includes the $250 for the alternative connection. Now, that is a separate project. It's not part of the Tap Trail, but we just, we did want to show it. So what we're asking for tonight is for the board to award the Tap Trail contract to RoadCon in the amount of $1,862,862,370.85 and the $10,000 payment to PennDOT. If the board does award that, we'll have the township manager go on the ECMS system, and he would, with a few mouse clicks, would award that. We're also asking the board to award Simone Collins, and this includes their subconsultants, the administrative portion of the contract for $15,000. And lastly, and I do have Peter Simone on here, he's on deck. There is a change order in the amount of $5,000 from some time ago, and he can talk to you about that. I, but before we get into that, I would request the board considering the Tap Trail award as well as the $15,000 award to Simone Collins for the administrative services.
If I could dovetail onto that, just regardless of how the board votes tonight on this project, I just want to take a quick second and recognize Steve Norzini for his efforts. This, this project and it's, and getting pulled together is, it's taken years. It's probably taken a few thousand night meetings. And Steve has been there every step of the way, helping steer the ship and get us to this point. I'd love to give Steve all the credit in the world for having the numbers come in under budget. I know he'd love to take credit for that, but we'll give him, we'll give him a little bit. So Steve, thanks for making this take so long so that the numbers came in under budget. So well done. So all seriousness, Steve deserves a lot of credit. This, this has been a Herculean effort, and he's carried the ball all the way.
Is there any commissioner comment?
So I'll just echo what Bill said. You know, this, this trail's been a long time coming. It certainly predates me being on this board, and, and I know it's worked on by, you know, at least one, maybe two other prior boards. So this is very exciting. And Steve, really, great job. There's a lot of partners in this, the school district, Penn Medicine. We had to get concessions from them as well as neighbors. I think once this is all said and done, it's gonna be a wonderful addition to Radnor and our trail system. And it's, it's very exciting, very, very exciting. I wish John Nagle could be here for this vote.
It was a team effort with Dennis Capella, Peter Simone, and his subconsultants, this board, this manager, school district, the Cornerstone HOA. So it was truly a group effort.
Is there any additional commissioner comment? Is there any staff comment? I see no public comments, so I'll call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to Resolution Number 2020-142, authorizing the contract to Simone Collins for the Radnor Tap Trail Construction Administration costs in the amount of $15,000. The payment of change order number 11 for the Radnor Tap Trail designed to Simone Collins, the amount of $5,000, to be paid from bond proceeds. I will so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Steve, have you already gone through this, or is there something additional you want to bring to our attention?
No, sir. The Construction Administrative Services Contract, that's standard. Sometimes we include that in the design contract, other times we do not. This was a multi-year design, if you will, so we did not include that in that. And I think that's a fair price from Peter Simone and his subconsultants for that work. The other item is the $5,000 change order, which came about due to some changes made to the project. And if you wish to delve into that, I can have Peter speak to that. We're not.
It's a pleasure of the board.
I'd like to hear what those changes are.
Sure, good. Commissioners and staff. That, that $5,000 fee covers about five months of our work, which we, we did at our risk to keep the project moving through multiple changes to the project, including the West Wayne Woods, where we had to coordinate our subconsultant team and participate in numerous meetings. That's five or six meetings of additional meetings with DVR RPC to coordinate the project. This additional coordination with the Radnor School District and Cornerstone HOA. Township Solicitor, we spent a lot of time with John Rice, working through the details of the project, et cetera. So just a lot of administrative time over a period of about five or six months.
Is there any additional commissioner comment?
Yeah, Peter, on that, so you did that work without being authorized to do that work, correct?
Yes, sir, because without us doing the work, the project would have died.
So Commissioner, we had told Peter that this is something that would have to go to the board, and if he wished to, he would proceed at his own risk, which he did for the project.
Well, I'll just say that I had requested that the West Wayne Preserve be addressed a year prior. So, I mean, we could have knocked out a lot of those administrative fees had we taken that into consideration and just objected to it at the start.
Is there any additional commissioner comment? Is there any staff comment? I see no public comments, so I'll call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Looks like five to two. Resolution passes. We've gone to item 4K, ordinance number 2020-20. This is, a few hours too late today, but hopefully it will be in place for next time. Adoption, enacting a new Chapter 176 Motor Vehicle Bridge Crash Reimbursement, authorizing the collection of and the reimbursement of township and fire department costs of response and cleanup after transportation and authorizing fines and penalties. Chief, well, I will so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Chief, you've already told us a little bit about this once. Tell us what we need to know again.
Actually, Commissioner Booker, one of the things he had brought up is trying to reinstate or reestablish some funding for all the services that are tied up on a bridge strike, like tonight. Commissioners received a picture and a notice. We had another one tonight where a vehicle was overturned. So the spirit of this is to add extra penalties and also help services that would be rendered or equipment that we use during a bridge strike. And not just the King of Prussia, Matz's Ford Bridge, but we do have bridge strikes throughout the township.
Is there any commissioner comment?
Well, I'd like to, like to say, I've, I've raised this issue, and I really put it at Bill's lap and Chris's, because this is a township funded cleanup time after time. And it's, it's, it's an issue that I'm very concerned about people hitting the bridge and about damage and about the delay of commerce and about safety, my constituents. And I still have all those concerns. But this provision really is meant to say, how long is the township taxpayers gonna clean up after professional drivers that smash into a bridge that is, that is so well-marked? There's no better marked bridge in the, in the county or in the state, I'll bet. So that's what this is about. But again, tonight, we have an overturned vehicle, we have damage, and we have another accident at the King of Prussia Road Bridge. And it's 110. And it's 110 or so in the last eight years, it's every six weeks. So this won't do anything to stop it. This is, is just a way that the taxpayers don't have to pay for professional drivers who act negligently. And I, I want to act on ways to stop this. And I believe that this bridge is too heavily used, this thoroughfare is too heavily used. And the development that is planned and ongoing in this area is inappropriate because of this issue. The bridge is an 1875 bridge, and I know other bridges get hit, but this is the bridge that gets hit by far the most. It's really the most in Southeastern Pennsylvania. So I'm going to vote for this and I recommend that you do. But this is not even close to addressing the issue. This is just a stopgap.
Is there any additional commissioner comment?
Yeah, Rich, I'll, I'll support the resolution, but I mean, this, I mean, this makes the township whole, but it doesn't address the bridge being struck. So we may be getting paid for it, we may be getting paid for it, but the bridge is still going to be hit. And, and the bigger issue to me is that the Jersey barriers are still underneath that, that walkways.
Right. I, I recognize your safety issue there and I understand it and people do, pedestrians and vice people use it. And we've talked about it, the, the only reason I don't want to remove the Jersey barriers because people will walk underneath there without any protection. And I believe that will, will happen. But again, this bridge is an 1875 bridge. It's no way designed to handle 17,000 or 20,000 vehicles per day through there, and that's what it's doing.
Any additional commissioner comment? Is there any staff comment? I see no public comments, so I will call the vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Item five, reports of standing committees of the board. Do we have any standing committees? Okay, moving on to item six, new business. Bill, I know you have at least one item.
I do. And I've got Tammy still on the meeting to help out, fill in some of the details. But we were notified recently from our health insurance provider that there's an employee wellness grant available to us. It's, it's got to be used by the end of the year. We were trying to quickly identify something that we could, something to purchase and apply against the wellness grant that would benefit employees, the employees of the township. It can only be used for that purpose. It's funded by the township's health insurance provider. So Tammy had come up with the thought, and I thought it was a fantastic idea, that we would purchase Fitbits with the grant money for the township employees. Again, as, as a way to promote a healthy lifestyle and staying moving. And so we're, the reason why we're here tonight under this item on the agenda is even as late as just about an hour before the meeting, we're still working on the numbers and being able to pull this together quickly. If the timing of the purchase is, the Fitbits are discounted by, I want to say $15 per unit. They're ordered before the end of November. The total purchase price is over the township manager's threshold to make the purchase, so we need board approval. But in order to achieve the savings or the discounted rate, as I mentioned, we'd have to make the order here in November. So what I was looking for tonight is a sense of the board. If, if your approval now, we would submit the order and then subsequently come back at the first meeting in December with the resolution that ratifies the tonight's sense of the board. So again, the highlights are that it's, it's not being paid for by the township, so there's, there's no taxpayer dollars. It's a, it's funded through the Delaware Valley Health Insurance Trust Program. And again, it's got to be used towards some sort of wellness or wellness type initiative. This, this seems to fit the criteria and I think it'll be well received amongst the staff. So Tammy, if I missed anything material, if you wouldn't mind just fill in a gap or two.
No, I mean, the only thing that I would add to that is that if we don't, if we don't use the money, we're going to lose it. So we do have a really good opportunity here and to be able to do something for every single employee. And we also can, can offer them to the board as well. The board members can certainly be included in that, but it's a great opportunity at a, at a perfect time when it's so vital to be cognizant of health and wellness, especially with all the stress that everybody's under right now throughout the pandemic. So it really would be a great purchase that will go a long way in touching every single employee throughout the township.
Thank you, Tammy. So we would just look for a sense of the board if, if there's, you know, approval or thumbs up, thumbs down, and then we'll proceed accordingly.
What's the, what's the discounted price?
So the Fitbit that we're looking at is the Fitbit charge, it's the charge for. So it's, you know, not to the level of an Apple Watch, but yet it's a little bit higher than entry level, you know, base type of Fitbit. So the, the unit sells for about 149 retail. And with the governmental purchasing price through Fitbit directly, we can get them for $99.32 each. So it's a pretty considerable savings overall. And if we do miss the window and, you know, decide to purchase it at a later date, the, the Fitbit will go up in dollars. It won't go up to the full retail cost, but it'll go up at least another $15 per Fitbit.
So, so this is under $15,000, right?
Yeah, 14,600, I think is what it would work out for, for all of the, the part-time and full-time employees included in that.
It's not taxpayer money, so I'm, I'm fine.
It's not at all. And again, if we don't use it, we will lose it. And it is a great way of reaching everybody.
I'm a thumbs up.
Yeah, I like it. And hopefully they'll use it more than I use mine. Like 3,400 steps today. How lame is that?
Well, you've been sitting a lot tonight. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you guys very much.
Great. I have one more item. I just wanted to say that I agree with Sean Fari. We do have a professional sports team in this township. We do have an issue with people paying their fair share in certain instances. So I want to work with, with Sean to try to address that in light of the fact that the amusement tax was voted to be repealed. So I, I agree with the sentiment and I want to support him in the, the sentiment that he expressed.
Okay, great. Is there any old business?
I have some old business. First of all, thank you very much, Rich. I appreciate it. As far as the old business, there was a great town hall meeting about Garrett Hill, about the Garrett Hill overlay. And I want to thank staff for advertising. I want to thank Ian, you got it live, it was on YouTube and Zoom. So it's, and it was held at the township building, so you didn't even need a, you don't need internet access to go to it. You could have just used your cell, you could have used the phone to dial in, and I think that's great. I know that I was able in the township, Molly did a great job. It went out on mail, email, Twitter, my Facebook page, the township's Facebook page, I put it in my newsletter. And then it was also on the township website, which was fantastic. Sumant Joseph went door to door, had a petition signed, spoke to the neighbors, and I appreciate that. I also appreciate Patty Barker. She sent emails to the Garrett Hill Coalition and let them all know about that. And I think that's great for transparency and that's what the residents told me, that's what they wanted. They just wanted a transparent process and I think that we did that. I didn't really hear any residents, you know, they're not really against any of the changes as far as I've, I've heard. In fact, the petition that I saw was contrary to that. So I am wondering what the next steps are, and this is regarding to the outdoor dining as well as easing the height restriction for about 19 homes on the south side of Garrett Avenue. I probably should have mentioned this before I went in my little spiel here. So this, really those two things, and, and like I said, I didn't hear too much, really too much, too many people going against it. So I'm wondering, is this something that planning should look at, community development should look at? I know, Bill, you were a part of the meeting. Lisa, we've spoken, we've walked the overlay before. So, and we have our solicitor here, so I don't know what the next steps are. But I understand it's COVID, but I think that, you know, it's the, the business of the township needs to move on. And this is, this is it, this is it. And unfortunately, I missed tonight's public comment. I had a Zoom issue. So I did, I know that, I think a bunch of people or a couple of people may have zoomed in. So I will leave that to our township manager, solicitor, or vice president or president to kind of direct what the next steps are.
Well, okay, let's have a conversation about that. But here and now is probably not the time to do it. We have in addition for old business, the Wayne Picnic Grove tent extension. We had previously, as I recall, said that we would extend it through December specifically in order to give Bill a chance to let us know whether it made more sense to purchase the tent or to rent it. He's sentimental around, which makes a pretty cogent argument for keep renting it. Do we have any additional questions for Bill before we tell him one way or another to extend the rental or not?
Yeah, I'm just curious why we're not talking about the next steps.
I just wanted to ask, yeah, I mean, can we at least, like, can someone at least advise Sean as to what, you know, and not, I don't think we should all do it, but like, does he just need to talk to John Rice or what does he need?
Transparent, we have residents involved and I want to bring this up and it's old business. So I just want to know what the next steps are. It's the end of the year, so there's going to be plenty of timing. We're probably going to get this started in the beginning of the year, but I think it's fair for the residents what the next steps would be. If this is a zoning issue, where it would go to the solicitor or Bill, I don't know.
So in terms of next steps, the board needs something to vote on. You could either bring a motion, because any commissioner can place any item on an agenda. You could either bring a motion to direct staff to craft the ordinance that you have in mind with the understanding that staff will end up doing so imperfectly in the sense that they will not necessarily frame it precisely as you have in mind, because they're not mind readers. You could also work directly with the residents or on your own draft the ordinance and simply direct us to put that on the agenda, in which case we would either vote on that ordinance or send it to planning. I think for the change that you have in mind, it will probably have to go to both planning and the Delaware County Planning Board. So either way, it's going to end up going to planning. If you look for a vote to direct staff to come up with the ordinance, then you'll be starting a little bit later, because obviously they need the time to get that done. And if I'm being honest, the end of the year is probably not the time that they're going to be putting all their efforts into this. They've got other things they've got to be working on. If you come to us with your own ordinance, either that you drafted or that you worked through with private counsel or the residents or whatever else, it will get to planning that much sooner, but it obviously will have not come from our staff. It won't have the gloss that they're able to put on everything. So it's up to you. You'll, you'll tell us what you want to do. Wayne Picnic Grove tents. I already led into that a little bit. Do we have any questions for Bill? Hearing none, is there anyone who objects to extending the tent through December as was requested by the WBA?
I do have a question. If there are more restrictive orders from the state, would that tent still be used?
Now, that, that is a fantastic question. As I think just an hour or two before tonight's meeting, we received something from the county with some additional restrictions that seem to be aimed at gathering places. So I don't have all the information now. We haven't had a chance to really read through the governor's report and digest it. Quite honestly, we may, we may get to a point where the restrictions are so great, it looks more like what things look like in the, in the red phase back before we had the tent. If you recall, we decided to move forward with the tent when we moved to yellow and they started allowing some outdoor dining. And so is, I think as long as the restrictions are consistent with the environment as it existed when we made that decision, it makes sense to, to keep it for the, the one more month that they requested. But as I sit here right now, based on what the governor put out earlier, I, I don't have a real precise answer. We should, we're going to go, we actually have a meeting on the calendar for tomorrow morning to start digging into it.
And when is the latest you could make the decision about keeping or removing for the month of December?
Well, I guess it depends on who's answering that question. I, I know that the WBA is chomping at the bit. They've, you know, they, out of necessity, they've been programming December as though the tent will be there. Obviously, if it's not, they'll have to, they'll have to pivot. And they've, they've been aware of that. We told them back at the end of October that we only had approval through November. But they would like to know sooner than later. I think with the tent company, we could probably let them know any day now.
Bill, I have a question. So there's a tent now in Wayne and I think that they may have taken the tent down in Garrett Hill, but essentially we're keeping outdoor dining. We're easing up on the rules for outdoor dining. Am I correct with what it means by keeping that tent up?
Well, the, the board passed a separate resolution that relaxed the outdoor dining restrictions throughout the town. The correlation between the tent that the township has up in the privately owned tents is that those restaurants that have the real estate or the, the private parking on their site, we gave them permission to use that for a tent or for additional outdoor dining. It's turned into a tent because of the weather. But there's a lot of restaurants on North Wayne that, that don't have the benefit of the real estate to put up a tent. And so when we made the decision way back when to put ours up, that was to help those restaurants out.
I just want to make sure that the restaurants in Garrett Hill and other parts of the township that they may not have, that don't have the access to the township tent can still have outdoor dining in whatever capacity, limited capacity, but I don't want them to be shut out. Because I know that the, the outdoor dining did sunset at the end of October. I don't know if Flippin' Balleys or any other restaurant is going to have outdoor dining or not. You may get a mild day, you may not, but I, I think that it should be available for all the restaurants in the township.
Yeah, the, the board extended that deadline from the end of October through the end of March 2021. So those establishments are able to take advantage of that, at least through that date. I think the temperature and weather are a bigger impediment to it right now than, than our, you know, any rules that we have.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And remind us the cost of the, the tent. Is it about $20,000 for a month?
Yeah, that's, that's the fully loaded cost. So that includes roughly 5,500 for the tent itself. And then there's a cost for the sanitation company as well as for the police detail. And so the sum of those three would be about 20,000. Out of, you know, given the weather conditions that WBA has asked for and are, are fundraising for code compliant heaters. If the tent were to remain, there'd be code compliant. If the tent were to remain, there'd be code-compliant heaters to help out to get us through December. So there'd be a little bit more cost that would show up on our end, but we're expecting the WBA to pay for that. And at the same time, I should also give the WBA more credit than that. They are, they do have a GoFundMe that they are actively campaigning and pushing out. And they set a goal of $50,000. I don't have where they're at right now, but they're raising that money to help offset the township's cost for the tent in total. So if they generate all $50,000, if they're successful in that regard, then we will have had November and December covered through that effort.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, sounds to me like we're good.
Very good.
Is there any additional? Go ahead.
No, I was just saying, very good. We appreciate it. We'll go through December, and then hopefully come January, we'll live in a different world.
Excellent. Moving on to public comment. Andrew Tillman writes, "Good evening and happy Thanksgiving. My personal and professional beliefs are against the overlay district. Do not see how this zoning benefits my business or any other businesses in Garrett Hill. We have run into issues on Garrett Avenue because of these zoning laws. It seems as though a transportation grant turned into an overlay for our community. Radnor Township Master Plan states that it is to preserve the business districts of the township, and you don't feel that any of this has benefited my company or any other businesses in Garrett Hill. These zoning laws are supposed to be available for change at any time, and I just don't feel like that is the case under current circumstances." Douglas Mccone writes, "I want to point out to you the outstanding work of your Radnor Township staff. My request for right-to-know information was made this morning and the response received late this afternoon. Great service, and you should be sure to commend everyone involved and the entire Radnor administrative team for their commitment to excellence in their work and to the public." Kelly Al Green writes, "Good evening. Thank you so much for the proclamation. I heard the comments from Mr. Booker expressing concern about what we do. I'm here, if you would like me, to simply take a minute or two to explain. It can be simply stated that we were founded 37 years ago by a local heart transplant surgeon who continues to be involved and live in our community. We have since grown to a premier national charity to assist families to cover their medical needs not covered by health insurance. We are the help for families with a medical crisis, the hope when they feel all is lost and helping hand for them to live and thrive. Easiest example is when a local girl sustained a spinal cord injury and became a quadriplegic. She needed, among many other things, a ramp just to get in and out of her house. That is just not covered by medical insurance. It's painfully expensive and exactly what we were able to provide access to. This and so much more is what we do every day. Hope this helps. Most important, we are grateful for this proclamation, and we hope you all stay healthy and safe." Barbara Cross Blackney writes, "For public comment at end of meeting. Dear Commissioners, the way this board of the Planning Commission are broadcasting meetings and providing for public comment during them is not conducive to true public participation. It is not satisfactory to have a comment or question which must be written in a hurry without having the benefit of the full presentation or others' questions and input, lest it not be submitted in time and then responded to with no ability to explain meeting, ask for clarification, ask a follow-up question, or make a follow-up point at that time. Why not just let folks register their interest and then participate in the meeting in the room via Zoom, just as they would at the township building? I'm quite concerned that some very major projects impacting all of us in the township for decades to come will be pushed forward in this non-participatory environment. Radnor Township deserves and must do better than this. Thank you." Gene Mitchell writes, "Again, would like an answer from Mr. Booker, please. Best regards, Gene." Gene Mitchell writes, "Sir, for $15,000 in revenue, which is the avid revenue, why are you burdening the businesses in this time? Best regards." John Recudi writes, "Lisa and Rich, I heard your comments tonight about RS21 serving other communities watching to Commish Meeting tonight. Nice job, by the way. The bigger issue is RS21 routinely welcomes non-residents of Radnor, Lower Marion, or Narber to do shows at our communities' expense. I have been on record being vehemently opposed to this practice, going back to when I was the GM. The current GM welcomes this practice. As a result, the non-resident guest hosts use our channel as an advertising source to which they profit or promote their product. During my tenure as GM, I accepted outsiders to host shows, however I charged them proportionately to offset operating costs. Rich, you may call the Chris Eggly case, which ended up in federal court for resolution. RS21 is heading down the same path. I also noticed that our Radnor website is currently showing interviews of non-residents. Regards, John R." That is all the public comment. I will move to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously.